I would ask that you stand for our opening prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance shall be healed.
Lead us in prayer.
And Father, we thank you for this day and every day that you give us and the many blessings we have received. We ask that you be with the Swartz family during the time of sorrow. And we ask that you be with our country when our militaries are on a force as they try to take care of the world. We ask this in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please see him, please. And these citizens signed up to speak. There are no citizens to be heard, so we'll go to item six on the agenda. Discuss approved, disapproved memorandum of understanding regarding budgetary amendments and approval, as well as chapter fifty-nine amendments and approval authored district attorney Renee Pena.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What we have before us, Judge, is...
Cool.
A memorandum of understanding essentially outlining what's been done for the last twenty years. It's been historical in terms of the county that hosts the DA's office to manage the budget, in particular in chapter fifty-nine, where I have discretion on how those funds are spent. We're now asking that this court formalize this MOU. Freo County Commissioners Court along with LaSalle County Commissioners Court has already approved the MOU to give the authority formally to the Adiscosa County Commissioners Court to make the decisions regarding fifty-nine funds.
You have five counties, but...
That's correct, Commissioner.
Which two have approved?
LaSalle and Freo.
What are fifty-nine funds?
Those are funds that are required through proceedings and where the state forfeits money for property that was acquired by a criminal.
This is not the general budget, your general budget, your formal stuff that we pay on each year.
It is not.
Okay.
What was the meeting on June the twentieth? About, I just got word that there was a meeting on June the twentieth with the judges concerning this.
I don't know what you're talking about. Who contacted you?
I read it right there from Mary this morning.
Do you receive an email on Friday, April seventh to be with the district judges to plan for the budget for Monday? I'm supposed to kind of plan a meeting of our division to determine how we're going to process for those judicial questions.
I can't hear the good Mary. I've read it, so I know what it says, but everybody may not be the same. And maybe everybody can hear better than I can.
This was the email that came in on Friday.
Well, to simply address that issue, that was a budgetary, that would be something outside of what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to discuss the chapter fifty-nine proceeds, which I have discretion over. Commissioners courts have basically oversight to make sure that I do not expend any monies outside of what's allowed to be expended on and that the expenditures that I do incur are reasonable and fair. So that is completely another issue of itself.
Oh, but it doesn't have nothing to do with this?
Yeah, it does have something to do with it, but it's not...
How would you, I would...
Well, I'm not sure at this point, I mean, I'm not old hand at this job particularly, but I'm not sure he's got what authority. And I'm not going to work for something personally that I'm giving up authority that I may have to control how something's handled or, and I don't know what the other judges are doing and haven't talked to any of them particularly. If you want to elaborate some on this...
What specifically?
I don't know, nothing specifically, just general. I don't understand.
Okay. Well, let me, you have the general budget, which you contribute to, correct? Each county, pro rata share contributes their share to my budget. We agree on that, correct?
Well, if we approve, we have the right to approve or disapprove, if I understand.
No, you're correct on that.
And I'm not giving up the budget.
Well, the distinction, Judge, is this. We're talking about chapter fifty-nine funds, where, I don't know if you had a chance to read the memorandum where we cite some of the authority and particularly some of the opinions from the Attorney General's office on the issue of fifty-nine funds.
Where do chapter fifty-nine funds come from?
As I indicated to the Commissioner, they come from proceeds that we acquire that are forfeited from criminal due to criminal activity.
I'm with the judge on this. I'm of a mind that I think this budget meeting should be behind us. I don't say that I'm in favor of signing this thing or having the court prove it at some point, but I don't think we're at that point right now. I've read it and I'm not real good with legalese, so I understand that I probably missed something. However, there are things in there that distress me a little bit, and I'm with the judge. I don't think it should be done now. Perhaps at later date, after further research and consideration and after this budget meeting, but I don't believe it should be done right now.
Judge, can I leave it coming?
Just to elaborate, look at what chapter fifty-nine is, what the district attorney's talking about. When us, like the sheriff's office, we, let's just take the game room, for example. If we file a felony case, and let's say we seize a hundred thousand dollars, and it goes into the forfeiture arena, which the district attorney handles. And once he goes through the court cycle, and eventually if that money's awarded to the state or to the county, the district attorney has oversight over that, and they call that chapter fifty-nine. If you look up the chapter fifty-nine in the occupation code, it directs the district attorney on how to handle that money and what, basically gives him discretion to use that money inside that arena. Now, it also puts restrictions where you can't use that money but for certain items. And if you recently recall, we received some money from the game rooms that we filed through Herb's office, and that's very similar to that. But that basically falls into a separate pot of money that the commissioners, yes, have oversight over, but the district attorney ultimately has to follow the law and dole out how that money's doing. So when people talk about chapter fifty-nine, it's labeled asset forfeiture. That's the title to it. And that's the money that you get out of a criminal case. He's the criminal district attorney, and he handles all that process. So eventually, after the money's awarded, he goes, it goes to his office. He has personnel in place that dole out that money as far as what the law tells him to do, and the remaining money is his. And that's basically what he's talking about. I'm not sure if that other email deals with his regular budget or whether it deals with chapter fifty-nine, but I think this is a separate issue. So I hope I've cleared the water a little bit.
The question is, in this memorandum of understanding, I think David is, what David's a little, it kind of has me a concern too, where it says salaries for officers, travel expenses, training, that's not a problem there, but as well as increased salaries in prosecutor's office. Does that mean that every time, I know you may have to pay for people to reward, not reward people, but to get good qualified people in, but if you're right in the middle of the year or so, if you decide to, you're going to hire, bring in a new attorney at a different rate, overall, then that turn turns around at the end of the budget year, goes to the regular budget cycle where the commissioners would have to...
No, again, what it is, if you reach after fifty-nine in occupation code, it says that that money can be used for salaries, for equipment, and about five or six other things. What that means, Commissioner, is that money, when it talks about salaries, that's above and beyond anything else. Let's say, for example, you were an investigator in his office, and you made fifty thousand dollars a year. If he assigned you an additional duty and wanted to raise your salary to do that one-time project, say five thousand dollars, he can use that money out of that budget. He cannot employ extra people. He cannot do anything you would do in a normal budget. So it has restrictions on it, and that's what it is. It's above and beyond. It's kind of like, let me give you an example. If we bought a Tahoe here, and instead we wanted a SWAT vehicle, and the county paid forty thousand dollars for that Tahoe, and we wanted to bump up another thirty thousand to buy a SWAT vehicle, like seventy thousand, you can take that thirty thousand out of that asset forfeiture money. And that's how that works. It cannot just be bought. It's above and beyond what it is. And Renee, I didn't mean to step in the deal, I'm just trying to clear this up a little bit, so...
How would that have affected or would it have affected the pickup and trailer that was out here that was taken in a raid?
And that's exactly what he's talking about. That's a chapter fifty-nine asset forfeiture. We file the paperwork with the district attorney. As it goes through the proceeding, you only have so many days to file for those assets. Once it goes to proceeding, if it's awarded to him, then his office would take that duly and that trailer. They would keep it in safe, the law says he has to keep it in safe mode. Then when it comes time, he'd auction it. That money, let's say we got fifty thousand dollars for that truck and trailer, goes to him under chapter fifty-nine, and it's his job and his personnel he has in place to dole that money out.
That all sounds wonderful, but I, we had no input at all into what happened up there. And perhaps we're not entitled to under the law, but nonetheless, if part of it was given back to whoever had title to it, I personally think that's absolutely wrong. And nobody discussed it with anybody that I was aware of, certainly didn't discuss it with me.
The law...
Judge, yeah, let me jump in here. Judge, chapter fifty-nine funds, chapter fifty-nine, obviously. It's a fund that was created to assist law enforcement in terms of acquiring possession of illegally gotten proceeds or, in this case, as you were just talking about, personal property. We go through a process. We determine whether there is enough probable cause there to determine that that particular thing was gotten illegally, whether it's cash or was bought with illegal cash. And we go through the process of serving that individual or the individuals that may have interests that we believe that it is illegally gotten profit. We go through the process. If they file an answer, then we go through the, obviously, the judicial process and come to some either agreement with private case and let someone determine whether that property should be given back to the respondent. It's been our experience that that rarely ever happens because those properties are clearly, or the majority of them, are illegally gotten. And we turn around and take that money and we apply it back into law enforcement, back into the DA's office. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, Judge, over the last almost twelve years on law enforcement in terms of training and equipment out of chapter fifty-nine funds. We've also used that, those funds, to assist in terms of our budget, which actually became almost the sixth entity giving money towards the regular budget. And that had been going on way before I became district attorney. As a matter of fact, the managing county, which is Adiscosa County, has been managing, basically, the DA's budget for over twenty years. I know that it would have been at least under Judge Lynn Ellison's ten years DA, and I think also under Judge Alfred Kendall's for some degree. So these funds, as I've talked about in the memorandum of understanding, and I'm just going to read a little bit here, the DA is allowed to apply funds pursuant to article fifty-nine et cetera. Some of these matters include payment for maintenance, salaries of officers, and that's under sections fifty-nine point zero six B, fifty-nine zero six C two, travel expenses for training, education seminars, fifty-nine point zero six D one four, as well as increased salaries in prosecutor's offices, and it goes on. So get to the next paragraph. And it talks, "At times, the expenditure of funds not previously placed within the budget are as submitted to each county at the time of finalization of the year's budget is required. The attorney for the state has the authority under chapter fifty-nine to expend funds to increase an employee's salary. Chapter fifty-nine only provides commissioners' courts with the authority to approve salary expenses or allowances for certain employees related to such funds. Commissioners courts may only disapprove the expenditure if it is unreasonable or outside the scope of chapter fifty-nine. The commissioners' court may not reject or disapprove the expenditure for the purpose of preventing or delaying use of forfeiture fund." Government Code forty-one point one oh six, and it goes on, fifty-nine point zero six D. So that, what we're doing essentially with those funds is putting it back into law enforcement so that we can keep our people safe. And my office has aggressively gone after those individuals who acquire those types of funds, or should I say monies, and/or property as being used illegally. So all we're doing here today, we're not talking about the regular budget, we're talking about chapter fifty-nine funds and those funds as they've been outlined in that particular section.
I understand, though. I don't misunderstand you, Judge. I don't understand why you gave the trigger back.
I'll tell you why, Judge. We had probable cause to seize that trailer, and it's an ongoing case, so I don't want to get into all the details, but the trailer was brand-new, it was worth a value and had a lien against it. A lot of times, and like that duly truck sitting out there, a lot of times you have to weigh what it's owed against it at the bank versus what you would get if you sold that truck. If you're upside down on it, the county has no benefit by taking that and having to pay money to keep it. So sometimes you have to give it back, and that's just the way it works in the business. And that's, and Renee can elaborate more on that, but sometimes you have to weigh that versus, and that belonged to the father-in-law of the defendant, it did not belong to the actual guy who was doing the illegal deed. So we sat down with the father-in-law and decided that the best thing to do is to give it back to him. He loaned the trailer to him, and he got caught up in some stuff, so that's the bottom line to it, Judge.
Well, I hear what y'all are saying, and if y'all think I don't understand, you got another thing coming because I do understand. And I don't, I cannot see how the trailer was part of a use that was illegal that you turned around and give it back to them. I'm sorry, I don't think you can say anything that'll make me understand, but I'd be happy to hear a discussion. I didn't hear any before it was done. I'll say that.
Let me elaborate on that, Judge, with all due respect.
Well, let's respect each other as having some sense.
Well, essentially, under the code also, if there is a lien against that particular vehicle, before we can seize that vehicle, we would have to give notice to the lien holders that that particular vehicle was used or has been used at least one previous time for an illegal activity. Therefore, they have noticed that if that person uses it again for another illegal process, we can then file a chapter fifty-nine lawsuit against that individual, give notice also to the lien holder and say, you were given notice, you did not take care of your interest in this particular vehicle, therefore, the law allows us to seize it irrespective of the fact that you have a lien and money is owed on that vehicle, whatever amount it is. If it's fifty thousand, it's owed, ten thousand dollars it's owed, they were given fair and adequate notice that they should take care of their property interest.
And you noticed the Cadillac judge that went along with that trailer on that duly? That's the case. The first time he was arrested back a year or so ago, the car was given back to him. The district attorney's office served notice on him. He was served papers saying, if you use that car again in illegal activity, there's a provision in the law that says a second time, second strike, they can seize it regardless. He was served notice the first time, and again, this is a year later, he's again selling drugs out of that car. We seized it, title company called me and says, I want that Cadillac back. He owes seventeen thousand against it. You're not getting it back. His personnel in his office served them notice saying, two strikes, you're out, the car belongs to us. We, we've already praised the car, and it's going through the process that it gets awarded to us. Sold the cars were thirty-four, thirty-five thousand. They owe seventeen to county, the chapter fifty-nine would benefit eighteen thousand dollars by selling that car. And that's how the process works.
Robert, I don't have a problem with your chapter fifty-nine stuff so much as the way this is written. It's written in legalese that basically may be taking budgetary authority away from the county and placing it wholly with Adiscosa County. And what I perceive, and this is the bottom line, is there's going to be some pushback from the counties on what this man is going to ask for this year, and I think he is trying to make a, a end run around that by getting this approved and then saying, oh, but I have this when the pushback comes. Now, that's the bottom line. You can dance around fifty-nine all day, but I don't think there's anybody here that has a problem with fifty-nine. We have a problem with the budget.
Particularly, I'm not, I'm not understanding...
We'll find, we'll get to that after this meeting on the twenty-sixth, but obviously some of the other counties are upset about it.
Are we talking about fifty-nine budget or are we talking about the...
No, we're talking about the other, but this is written in such a manner that it could, it could possibly give more authority if we approve it. I'm not going to vote for it. We don't dance around all day. I'm not going to vote for it, Judge, and if we have one more, we're done. I move we table this until later.
And I'll circulate.
But I want to make one comment, that I wouldn't sign this decree because the last sentence says, "This MOU shall automatically renew annually unless notice determined has given prior budget planning process in each county." So I won't sign anything that automatically renew for...
I miss that, that's a good point.
I understand the fifty-nine, where the money comes from, et cetera, and it has to be regulated and so forth, I understand that. But with that sentence, I would not sign.
What would you suggest, Commissioner?
It just be for two years or one year or whatever.
One year, anything.
When I get out of office, I don't want someone to be obligated to this, is what I'm looking for.
Well, we're hoping we've given a less notice determined has given prior budgetary process that particular year.
If a new commissioner comes in and he doesn't know that that's a process, and he doesn't do anything about the budgetary process, it's all...
Y'all don't really come in and tell us when we got these problems from previous years, that we're bound to do this or not, and it doesn't give me a warm feeling.
What can we do exactly to make sure that we have you properly informed?
Well, you could certainly come and make a presentation to the court anytime to keep us informed of what's going on, about whatever may be going on that affects your office, that affects our money. That's what we're talking about.
So you want us to give you a presentation on our office in terms of what we're doing and in terms of what the expenses that we're incurring are?
I think we're entitled to that.
Absolutely, you are.
And I don't really feel like we've been getting, I mean, you're not talking, but we see each other, but not too much about budgeting across that, so...
So we send our information over to the commissioners' court for review, but again, this is not anything new. It's something that's been going on for longer than I've been...
I don't care. It's been going on a hundred years. If it's wrong, it's no good. I'm not saying for sure it's wrong, but I'm certainly entitled. I hadn't been here a hundred years, so I can't worry about that too much. But I've been here long enough to be concerned about items that may not have proper authority or may not be used properly.
My motion is not to disapprove, it's to table.
That's correct. And my second was to the same motion.
I think one of the items of concern is the way that, under item one, purpose number two, the way it's worded where it says, the last line, authority for budget and chapter fifty-nine approvals, maybe if it was worded as a sole authority for chapter fifty-nine budget and approvals. Because the way that is, I think Commissioner Reynolds is reading into that that's saying your budget and the chapter fifty-nine budget.
That's what it says.
If it's tabled, is there a problem after the twenty, that we put it toward the end of the month, so everybody can get their identities?
That's perfectly fine.
Doesn't affect anything in any way?
No.
Okay. Since everybody has that been, do you want to put it toward the end of the month?
I agree. I'm kind of interested now with, you know, with this meeting that's going to be held on the twentieth in, in Jertonton, it says, they're inviting the district judges and the district attorney in their offices by, by email. And then Judge Hurley is the one that's putting this together, kind of in commissioners or, and judges and Herb, it says this thing was set up by county attorneys. Are you aware of this?
Okay, sure.
You haven't said anything, or you're telling us that because you were part of it, that you're part totally?
I'm just listening. I read this agenda item this morning. I'm not talking today about it, I'm not talking to anyone about it. I know about the meeting that y'all are talking about because I was notified of that meeting. That meeting is totally different from this chapter fifty-nine funds, I think.
I think you intended that...
Not that you're dealing with what we're doing today.
The way this is written does not give you a warm feeling about it. All right, Mr. Herbert?
Is chapter fifty-nine funds, is there any place in our budget that addresses chapter fifty-nine funds? I mean, if we're not, if this is not going to affect us directly in our budget, I don't see what the exception is. I mean, it's not implying that's of any money. And it does, in fact, go to, I'm talking to another district attorney on different reasons, but this came up, and he instructed me that how these chapters fifty-nines go to the first officer's seat, they go to the state, the state returns it back to the county, or to the district attorney, and he is the executor of that thing. And I don't understand yet what the conversation is because he spent that money for law enforcement, equipment, spies, training, and it has no impact on our budget one way or the other. I don't, I don't think the fifty-nine is in question. I think the way David's, Commissioner Reynolds is saying is, it says that with the attention to Adiscosa's current position as a sole authority for budget and chapter fifty-nine approvals, the budget is all of us. It's like district judges being allowed to come in, we, I take it, to set salaries how they want to do it, so, but I think, I'd rather, for once, about those meetings over and then decide what was on business. Have you read that one? I haven't read the memorandum, but I think there's a misunderstanding. I don't believe it gives him any authority to come in here and have any authority over our budget that we pass for this county. But Adiscosa County is a firm of approval.
And it'd just be different if the MOU was worded...
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
If it covered strictly fifty-nine funds, I don't think we'd be happy with this, but the way it's worded is, as I said, is a little legalese, and Mr. Long, Judge Long probably could decipher it better than I am, but as a layman, it does not give you feeling of comfort.
So Commissioner Reynolds, just so I'm clear, so you're concerned about section one, two, where we talk, under purpose, where we talk about formalizing policy? That is your main concern?
Yes, sir, primarily, and the point that you've made that we're giving it in perpetuity, this needs to be something that is done perhaps every year, every two years at the longest, but it needs to have a closure on it.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, on that, on the closure date, what are y'all thinking?
I'd like to look at it every year.
I would, of course.
What date would you like, is what I'm asking? What date would we, would June the first?
I think, I think by the time July, did you have something, Scott?
Yep.
By the time July the first comes around, we're deep into the budget. There's anything, I think that July one would be a good point. Thought, is that too late, Judge?
That's too late, far as I'm concerned. We started working on the budget in April or...
Tell me when, I don't care.
And I want to consider everything as early as we can. This county historically has food around on the budget process, and that's...
April one?
That would certainly be better than what we've been doing, which is...
Let's shoot for April one if you have a suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, your question, question?
I forgot, I was here, everybody, because it wasn't that important. I think I was just going to ask her, I already asked her, but you didn't see any difference in that, but, so you said we put it into the end of the month? Is that what y'all want, put it back on to the end of the month? Get over this other meeting on the twentieth that y'all are concerned about?
We just put it at the end of the month, and, and, you know, we kick it down the road if we need to.
We'll put it on the agenda for the flesh meeting on the month.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but I just want to make sure that we don't come at the end of the month with some of the... Are you asking him to reword that?
Well, I would, I personally would find it a little bit more palatable if it was definitively worded to where it only applied to chapter fifty-nine funds. It doesn't, I understand the philosophy of the need and the authority... the philosophy of the need and the authority as great as a layman can. So, don't cover us up with things that might scare us, if you wanna call it that, as justification. But, you know, I don't, I understand what Robert said about the 59 funds and what Maurice said. I don't have an issue with that at all, not one. That obviously is fairly settled law. But what I don't wanna do is give up any budgetary authority in the process of verifying that you are the sole, solely responsible for that.
Understood. So, the option two is basically to say, we come to you every time there's an issue with Chapter 59, we put it on the agenda and we go forward with it. That, I mean, that's the other option here. Quite frankly, if I have an issue that I wanna bring before this court, we can do that. That's the other option. We don't even have to do the MOU. This was being done only because, again, it's been that way for at least over 20 years that the county Atascosa's been managing, so.
Historically, it's always been done like this anyway?
Yep. While we were trying to...
That doesn't make it right a single minute because it's always been done this way. I don't care what you're saying or anybody else is saying.
Right.
That's not why we were elected to do what has always been done.
I don't disagree with that. All I'm saying is that we're here just to formalize what has been taking place for the last several years. That's it.
Well...
If you don't wanna do that, that's perfectly fine. We can bring that particular budget item or items to this court.
We're not your enemy. We're just concerned.
I don't think we need to open for you on the court with monthly presentations. You know, we don't wanna do that.
Well, speak for yourself, Pete. I mean, I'd just as soon do it personally. I think that's what I was elected to.
I think since you already have two counties on board, if you just rewrote the MOU and brought it back to court, that they would likely consider...
Well, maybe not. We would see what brought back before the court.
What the reading says.
Yeah. I mean, we're not, I don't think we're idiots here. Maybe some of us are. And if we are, I'll confess, I'm probably the lead idiot. But that being the case, I just, I personally am not gonna vote for it. And I don't know what the rest of the court will do. Although we've had some indication. So, say whatever you wanna say.
I'm done.
You're done. You said your say.
Yes, sir. I'll basically give them the two options that we're looking at and...
Herb, you got any other comment for the court?
I'll sit out, I'll sit out whenever he wants to, any Commissioners, and we can talk about this. Whatever time you want to and see what we can work out, if you want me to do that.
Well, it might be predictive if we would do it that way.
May, may give us a little more warm buzzer feeling.
I'll try to make it warm buzzer.
We could, we could set up a work session and with no, no result being taken, no action being taken, just a work session to consider this, discuss it, make sure we all understand how this is gonna be handled and not that we're making a rule that because we've done it 50 years, we're gonna do it the next 50. That's not any reason at all to keep doing something just because it's been, been done a long time.
Judge, I have a question for the county attorney, 'cause I was not aware of this particular meeting, obviously the 27th that was sent out, so not aware of it. And I just wanna kinda get an understanding of what your understanding of this process was supposed to be or is going to be in Atascosa County.
I had no idea. I got the memo away. Ready. I don't know anything.
Any discussion with anyone?
I discussed it, yes.
With? On her position, do you know?
Yeah.
So she called you or?
Yeah.
Okay. And give us some light. I'm just trying to understand. I don't, I'm kinda caught in the dark here, right, about this. So I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
I'll read the email if that's all right.
Sure, sure.
It says to, this is dated the 27th of Friday, May 27, 2016. Says to District, Judicial District, District Judges, District Attorney, County Judges, and County Attorneys, Atascosa County is planning a meeting of our Judicial District to determine our county's budgeting process for those Judicial District budgets. As Lucina Vickers has discussed with each county's attorneys already, and I discussed with each county judge at the Probate School and Corpus, we need to get our legal, our process legal. Atascosa County is concerned about considering the rights and privileges of all the counties in the Judicial District as, and this process is really up to members of the counties. So I think the only effective way to get it done quickly and effectively is to get everyone together. It is clear by legal opinions and court opinions, we have sent all of you that we are doing it wrong. The legal information indicates our direction, but there is no statute to determine how the district administration is done. It has been indicated to us that an interlocal agreement is in order. So we hope to reach agreement on the 20th and have the county attorneys draft a contract we can submit to our Commissioners' Courts. And it just says, we please to host a meeting. I think most central point will be at the Jerdington Community Center on Monday, June 20. That seems to be the unagreed upon date by the county attorneys, 10 to 2 p.m. Host a lunch, working lunch. Please confirm your attendance. Feel free to bring along, like your assistants, the auditor, the treasurer, Commissioners. I'm inviting our District Judges and District Attorneys in their offices by this email. On June 20, I will start as interim chair and then we will set some operating rules, who can speak, how long, and how we wrap up with a decision. I have suggested agenda that we discuss and amend if wanted with as many people I believe as many, it would be successful. These guidelines will be essential. We could have as many as 25 or 30 people. I realize there will be judges with much more experience than I, but I feel that the official depository county, as the official depository county in this matter, it is our responsibility to take the lead towards fixing the situation. Sorry for any conflict that you may have, but the county attorneys coordinated this by their schedule, with assuming their schedule might be clear if theirs is. But as you know, with a large group, we just really best pick a date to the best we can, hoping it all works, works for all. Please confirm your attendance and then sign. Best regards, Judge Robert Hurley, County Judge, Atascosa County.
So, I don't know if everything is going right now. I'm trying to pay attention to understand, so I don't wanna offend anybody. But you're, basically what you stated was that you really don't need us to sign this because you were doing it...
What we can do is, if the concern of this court is for them to be active, for you to be active in the decision or the process, we can simply put it on your agenda and bring that particular issue to you or issues whenever necessary. That, that's one way to do it. If that's what the court wants to do, that's perfectly fine. I mean, I don't have any objection. We're just looking for some efficiency of this process. That's all on Chapter 59.
So we don't have, I mean, this MOU is just, you brought it to us, it's one way or another, if we sign it or not, y'all still keep a little bit of our...
Right. You ever been before the questions court?
That's not what they've been doing.
No, not, not historically. But I was just asking if it just keeps going the way it's going.
I'm just concerned about it. I wanna be sure that we know what we're doing and that we have a say so into it. We're spending our taxpayers' money as other courts are. And if they don't care, that's their business. I care.
No, with regard to the, your budget, in terms of what is given to the DA's, absolutely, you have an absolute right to oversee that budget and to question whatever you need to question. And what we're talking about here obviously is the 59 funds, so.
We'll put this back on the next agenda. And if we got it, the motion, did you know that?
Yes, in a second.
In a second. So we'll have to vote on that first.
Would that include to put it on the end of the month, the end of June, June the 30?
I didn't put it in the motion.
I don't think so. That wasn't in the motion.
Let's, let's leave that open, but tentatively, just informally planned. Unless you wanna amend the motion. I don't know, make any difference.
I would like to put it on the 30, right? I mean, that's what I'm concerned about right after the meeting. I'll adjourn this, put it on the 30, in my opinion. And get, you know, figure it out.
Just do it that way.
That's fine. No issue.
You wanna amend your motion over there?
I would amend the motion to reconsider this on the last meeting of the month and the month of June.
Which will be June 30th?
Yes, yes, Judge.
30, June 30. And that, that suits me. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second, Judge, is it second?
I say that, okay. And I would also. So, any further discussion? Do we have to see? We'll have to vote on the amendment first. And all in favor of the amendment to the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All voted for the amendment carried. And the motion now as amended, all in favor of the motion as amended, signify by raising your right hand. And everybody voted for it, so the motion as amended carried.
Very good.
We'll put it on the agenda for the, the month end meeting.
So, do I need to visit with you or the county attorney on this?
Visit with Herb, sorry, with me. But one of you visited with me before the six meetings. I'll figure it out inside of your head.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I don't completely understand. Whenever you visit with him, if you understand, would you call me? And I'll go visit with him so I can 100% completely understand.
Absolutely, please.
Would you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Judge, Mary is motioning that you need to get on your way or something.
What time have I gotta be there? I guess I better go. So, with that said, I'm gone.
Okay. James gets a hot seat.
We're done, we're done with number six, right? Yeah. Number seven. Discuss, approve, disapprove proceeding with the contract for construction with the MJ Boyle, General Contract Incorporated for continuation of courthouse restoration and issuing notice to proceed, signed by the County Judge, Arthur Louis Fisher.
Good morning. Just to give a little context to this, this has to do with the courthouse restoration project phase two. We did this project in October of 2015, and bids were received on November the 12th of last year for $6,670,000. The proposal was approved by Commissioners' Court, I believe it was on November 30th of 2015. And then a contract was prepared by Jeff Chapman and was signed on January the 7th, 2016. So a notice to proceed is the official notice that's given to the contractor to say, okay, we're ready to start construction. And so that's what this notice is. And, and so that would be signed, and then we proceed on with the construction project.
I think we're good to go, right?
Yes. Micah, we've already been, submitted all of the certificates of insurance and those sorts of things. And so we're ready to proceed now with the construction.
Mr. Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the, I don't know if the court did it by official action or if it was unformal, but did we not hold back because we were waiting on this grant proposal to be approved and any work done during the interim would not be eligible for a match? Is that correct?
Yeah. So what I grieved you on is the formality. Now we have this issue of the grant.
Oh, no, yeah.
So we, we had a gentleman's agreement that MJ Boyle would not start construction until after April the 29th, which was the date that the Texas Historical Commission was meeting. And it was in, it was publicized that they would make the decision at that point about who got grant funds. It came to a surprise to, I suppose, everybody that they did not make a decision on who would receive grant funds. And they put that off. And they, they are possibly going to reconsider that in, in July, their next quarterly meeting. The commission itself meets quarterly to make official decisions. And so, since the agreement was that the contractor would hold off until July 29, that date has come and gone. And now, you know, we, we think it's time to proceed on the contract.
But we would lose whatever, a small portion of the grant, would we?
Right. We, we will not be able to be reimbursed for any portion of the money that we spend until we are in receipt of an award, of a grant. So, the money that we'll be spending at this time would be, would be 100% attributable to the county.
Okay. We have about, give or take a little, that's 45 days of time between now and grant awards, that's approximate. Does Mr. Boyle or does the construction company have a thought as to how much in dollars and cents might be spent during that period of time? I, I don't think the court is, I'm not this inclined to going along with what you're asking for, but I'd like to know how big the hit was. If they could spend $2 million in that time, I'm not gonna go along. If they could spend a few hundred thousand, maybe we'd go along.
Do you have that, Sue? I didn't bring that. Basically, we'll, we have $2 million in this fiscal year budget. And Sue, if you...
Our, the construction budget for the courthouse, this year was $2 million. And MJ Boyle is estimating that between now and July, and we're here about the grant, and we still expect to receive money from that grant, we just won't know how much until July 21st. But until July, we're estimating an expenditure of $723,000. And we won't actually be losing grant money. We just won't receive that grant money until after it's awarded. So if we get a grant for $2 million, we won't start receiving that $2 million now. We won't start receiving the $2 million until after it's awarded, which will be July 21st.
And just to clarify, we don't receive the monies upfront from THC. It's a reimbursable grant that we have to supply documentation and then they reimburse us if they approve it.
Is there anybody making bets on how much the county might be in line for? I mean, I think...
I think it's between two, two mil, and this, of course, is just...
Conjecture, I understand.
Right. Between two and four million. Two million would, I think, be the, the smallest amount. And four million would be the full amount that, that we could receive based on the fact that they generally fund about, $6 million is the most that they can contribute in an award total.
To any county? Yeah. I remember those conversations.
So, if, if they were inclined to fund us the maximum amount, we'd get four million. And if it's less than that, you know, it could be three or two. I would be surprised if it's less than $2 million.
I know, and I know the county is committed to finish the project, so regardless, we got to go on.
Thank you for that. And we have spreadsheets based on how much the grant award is, and then how much will be needed over the next two years. And we do hope and plan to be finished in December of 2017, which is another budget year. You know, that'll be into 2017, 18. So, the money will eventually be spread over the next three budget periods. This period, we would have $2 million, and then the next period, 2017, 18, and then even some in that 2018, 19 period. So, you know, it's like a, a three-year budget process to go. But I can share this spreadsheet with all of you. And then comes July 21st, when we know exactly how much our award is, we can finalize these budget figures.
That'll copy if you, and it could be on the paper.
The print's tiny. This is really the, the funding history of the, the court, of the entire courthouse project. And I've tried to check all the figures with, with Luana and Lewis and the THC. That if anybody sees anything not correct, let me know, and we can get it fixed. And if you have any questions about this too, I'm always available to come in. But this shows each of our grant awards, starting back in 2004, and then up through April 2016, when we thought we were going to receive that award, but, but we didn't. And then waiting on, if you look over the, the very column that shows the MJ Boyle expenses, we know that in January, we had a $67,000 expense, that was for bombs. And then April, 122,000, because it's very difficult for the Boyle, MJ Boyle Construction Company just to shut down things. So, the longer it was shut down, would just, we would incur more expenses in the long run. So, we don't want to continue that shutdown. And that's why the meeting today, so we can give him the authority to, to move forward. Any other questions?
No, I'm good, aren't you?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Really looking good.
Thank you, Sue.
And the rest of the county and Louis are doing a great job.
Yes, we need a motion, I think.
All right, I'll move that we proceed with the contract for construction with MJ Boyle General Contract Incorporated Incorporated, English, whole ass restoration, issue a notice to proceed.
Second.
Good. Been made a second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion passes. Let me get your sign.
I'll, I'll, this is your note, I'll get it to, I'll get it to you if you want, if you just want.
Okay, well, I have one here, to sign here, and then I'll.
Okay. This, this one's that.
Okay, so we'll sign this one here, please. Somebody got a good blue pen, mine is on the.
Copy, consider. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
I already signed it, he signed it too. Item, item number eight. Discuss approve, disapprove resolution for 2016 to, dash, 2018 grant application for victim services program for Orange County contingent on specific modifications of salary and reallocation of changes. The order was Judge Long.
There's not much attached to this, Herb. You ought to, can you have anything to elaborate on on this?
David, I don't know exactly where, where the Commissioner's Court's going. I think that, from what I understand, they, the Commissioner's Court wants to approve the grant dollar-wise now. But it needs to be, when Jennifer comes in in January, it'll be modified to comply with a different office model as far as how the victim service coordinator is used. Maybe cross-training all of the employees in the office as opposed to using one. I think that's what I understand is the approach. That it stay in place until October the 1st, and that it be changed at some point. The employee that's now on board would, would not be the one in, in the office at October the 1st.
But that was my understanding. And then I certainly have nothing against Erica. The other item, I believe, there was a possibility, the probability that the court would like to look deeper into the salary level as opposed to what was given on that particular grant application. And if I remember Jennifer's comments, and I think they're in here, that she might reallocate those assets or those things in the grant, if I got that right, so I have.
You understand, I have no capability of getting involved in January 1, 2017. That I'm only here for until December the 31st, and I would be through as county attorney. So, I, I'm, I told you what I understand, this, this situation is.
I would move that we would approve the grant application as presented with the understanding that the court was not giving up its authority to control the budget and the salaries of the employee therein.
That it could be modified or adjusted, yes.
It can, in, in whatever way. Shelby was the, the main author of it, he could probably, lack of likeness better than anybody else. So, whatever Shelby's understanding is, is where we'll go. Shelby, what, what was your?
My conversation with Jennifer is that the, the, we did a survey of the salaries, Luana did, rather, on, on, for the auditors for victim services, and found out that we were way above most counties our, our size. Talking with Jennifer, she agreed that the grant could be used for more other than just salaries and stuff. So, she wanted to have the option to modify the grant to meet the needs of that office. And to me, it makes more sense. The way I understand, we are required to have a victim services person. And, and I agree with you.
Trying to say.
Yeah. And, and the question was, is that, you know, it, it is, the, the resolution will say that it'll be just for a two-year period, but goes on to 2018. So, basically, what it is, is that the, the, the county attorney-elect, we want to give her the option to modify the, the grant to, to tailor her needs to, for her support in the office.
She made a motion.
I have, I'll second that. Been made a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion passes.
I didn't. I didn't. I, I found my name, excuse me, the next item, not to take anything away from James while he's looking for his notes, but says, discuss approve, disapprove relocation of surplus buildings, including an 18-by-32 storage building purchased with HAVA funds and the former EMS mobile home, Arthur Peet and myself. And I think that was from what conversations I've had, I guess primarily with the, the judge or with Mary, was that this storage building that's referred to as the one that's up here between here and the courthouse, and at some point, it will have to be relocated because it's part of the historical zone, and that it was purchased with funds dedicated specifically to the elections department. And that Susie says they are still in need of it for storage of their equipment and such. And the conversation I got in this is just that conversation, that at some point, that it would be relocated to the back of this building or to the side somewhere where it would be accessible to her office and such as that. Is that your understanding, Pete?
That's correct. We checked the size and looked at it, and if you went right behind this dock, slide to go back there, sit right there in that corner, wouldn't have truck, porking or anything else. We said it right there, that's what we thought would be a good place for it. As James, and he thought that would be a decent place. And it is on the blueprint to the courthouse down to be disassembled. And I had already notified them before that we didn't want it disassembled, that we would be attacked. And so, Louis Fisher is supposed to write up the details of it. It's supposed to be just picked up and moved instead of disassembled. So, there may be a little change in the cost on that, but it'd be minimal because of the cost. Probably the whole of it would just move.
Sure.
Except that, get electric to it and set it on the dock.
And the, the EMS part of it was, the court had discussed either formal or informal in the past that we might utilize the old EMS trailer as the county, excuse me, as a precinct for JP office and put it at the yard, the county yard in Rungy would be in the proper precinct. Would, we really won't save a lot in terms of rental costs because the city of Rungy does not charge much of anything for rental. But it was utilization for the building. I see our JP is here, does. Would you like to say something about, about the possible use of the thing?
That I don't see, and I want to confirm is what's it going to cost us? You know.
To move it?
To move it, and then to keep me up there versus the cost of staying in this building. Considering the, the situation with our budget this year, that we were being asked to.
Spend money on that.
Correct.
We probably have a little bit this year, next year is going to be a little tighter. Do you have an idea what it might cost, James, to move it, set it up, your last year department?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe three, three grand, 2,800, 3,500, because it's pretty far. How far is Rungy, I mean, 16 miles?
Well, I mean, excuse me, 15 miles.
15, 15, 16 miles. So, it's, it's going to cost over 2,500, I would assume, maybe 3,500.
Could rely on the water line.
That's another.
Yeah, you're going to have to also connect that, that's, I don't know what the plumbers are going to charge. Some charge okay, and 1,500, 1,800, 11,000.
Disability access to the, to the trailer.
ADA. Yeah. You'd have to have.
Yeah, that would build it.
You'd have to have a ramp, that's another four grand. Something like 3,400, 4,000.
Just to give them an offer for it.
I see your point, then you got to do an electrical to it, another couple of grounds. Are you looking at maybe moving it over there, getting it functional, ADA, 10 grand? 8,500 to 11,000, I mean, different contractors, different prices, it's going to cost them.
Who's responsible for locking the yard sensors, all that, any equipment? If we have to remain in the office past 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00?
I would assume the last person out would be you.
Dale, what do you have a thought? I mean, that's basically encroaching on your territory, so to speak.
Well, I, I need to go take a look at the yard and see where we're looking to put it, and see how we can fit in there and be one of your room.
Oh, the other thing would be if, if it could be located, again, back to the sewer and everything connections, if it could be located in such a manner to minimize those costs rather than putting it. Now, you know, at, from the standpoint of, and that advantageous use, if you put in your fence and put another small entry door in the fence or something like that, but then you're having to plumb the sewer and everything over to it.
Well, but then you've got parking access. You know, it would be in the street right away, which is not always doable.
Have they worked, they worked on your building in Rungy? What did they do to it? I saw a few.
They did the front part, all the front part, the entrance, the wood was rotten, so they just repaired that.
The city doesn't charge us water there, right? In Rungy, or do we pay the water? Do they want?
Pay water?
Okay. My mistake, I'm sorry.
Electric, electricity.
I thought it was one or the other, maybe it was a few years back, I don't know.
Could the JP office be moved to the city of Rungy's office? Do they have an extra office? And it used to be a bank, which is anonymous. And I don't think they have everything, every office filled in. I know they have a.
People, they, they have maybe one or two. I haven't spoken to the right people, but from the information that that building is.
It's not in great shape either.
Correct.
They, the city of Rungy allows the bank to hang them with a expensive building that had high maintenance, roof leaks, air conditioning, your air conditioning and building that they need a fraction of the space they have. The part that might be usable, possibly, and, and again, you get into access issues, would be the portion that had been blocked off after the city of Rungy took over the building for a while. How do you express the bank? I'm trying to think of.
Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo used the back portion of the thing for strictly a drive-in bank, no customer access. And that lasted a short period of time, and they bailed on them, and that was it. But that part was segmented and secured away from the city offices, so the bank could use it. Now, again, you have a real access issues back there because you have a drive-in, but it was never meant for anyone other than the employees to go in. So, I'm, I imagine there's ADA access, but I'm not sure of that, so I don't know.
I'm going to hold off on that one for now.
Yeah, why don't, Dale, why don't you?
I'll investigate the Rungy yard, and I'll get a response point for those next record.
Talk to David, and y'all look at it together and see if, see if it fits the need. If not, I'm, you know, I know we didn't get much of an offer for it. There's, maybe we'll get enough, much of an offer the next time. But I understand that, you know, it doesn't make much sense to spend $7,000 or $8,000 to save a dollar a year. Or whatever it is.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, I wouldn't say it'd just be a dollar, because we will save on utilities just based on what your electric bill is.
Yeah.
In the city building now.
Yeah, Luana and I have talked about that because I've, the, the utility bill in Rungy is, if you even look at Ball City, it's double Ball City's most of the time.
Is it?
And then that's just the nature of the animal. It's not anything David's doing or not doing, it's just the fact that the building is not insulated or anything else. But if you do that, let's, let's just informally pass on it. Do we need to take action on this, on this other building formally?
Yeah, because if it, if it says it's going to be disassembled and we're planning to move it, I would say take action on it.
When you take action.
I'm sorry. I'm speaking about costs. What type of costs would we be looking at to move that trailer over here? Because that's, I wasn't even thinking about the expense of, you know.
The, the, there is a cost in there to disassemble it. So, you're going to go with the contractor to give a surprise in lieu of disassembling it to just move it, which it should be best called the moving. But I could, I could, I could, I could. So, you have the air conditioner working.
And we have, I'm sure, already, you know, we're saying, we have destroyed a lot of election records back as far as 2006. There are some computers and, I believe, some radios that belong to the sheriff's department. There's some records and equipment out there that doesn't belong to us. But that shouldn't weigh too much to move it. Our biggest problem would be those auto marks. And I am working with the SNS to see if I can get those, to take those back or give us some.
Well, I was going to say that, what we're, my understanding what Pete said is we would have a change order for the contractor to accommodate disassemble versus moving. a change order for the contractor to accommodate disassemble versus moving, and that would take care of it. So if, if that cost is embedded in the courthouse cost, if that's what you're asking.
Your cost? You wanna add your cost unless you have to move your equipment out of the building while it's being moved and move it back in.
Well, what we have, we can move ourselves. It's, it's not that, you know, those auto marks are eighty-five pounds with their own rollers. So, we can just move them somewhere out of the way. Yeah, they're, they're pretty heavy. I don't know. I'd want somebody to look at that. That's the only potential problem I could see is them being in the building when it's moved. I mean, I don't have a problem with them being in there, but whoever moves it might not want them in. That's all.
Do you know what the cost is for the disassembly?
No, I, I don't have any, they've not given me any idea of what the cost is. They have the part that's serviced, who's got those. But they'll come up with something.
I would move that the court approves the moving of the storage building to the position that Pete and James have ascertained that it can be used and that the change order necessary to change from disassembly to moving be given to either Fisher and Hector, MJ Boyle, so they can, so they can, Fisher, so they can come up with the cost and it be allocated out of the courthouse budget.
Been made a second oral favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, approve, disapprove, hiring one additional maintenance tech from the past advertised pool since the advertising of the three open positions. We have had one more employee resign. Yep?
Yeah, two weeks ago, we had an employee resign due to absenteeism. And so, since we have just advertised here last month for three positions, rather than going through the process again with that advertising, we had a substantially large application pool to draw from. It'd be very easy instead of hiring one tech, one out of that position in that advertising to go ahead and hire two. So just wanting to get approval of the court to go ahead and do that to where we would be up to our maximum allowable employment then.
Don't have any issue with that, Dale. Concern downstream is, as the budget process grinds through, there's at least substantial chance that... And you've approved, you've sent us your budget and I haven't looked at it. So tell me, did you include all of the employees you currently have in it in your current request?
Yes, I am. And the reason for that is I've tracked about forty percent of the remaining budget. So there's a substantial reduction in the overall budget of the department. And as I had discussed with the judge a couple of times here in the last three or four weeks, our office is a little unusual from other departments. In most of the other departments here in the county are basically staff oriented and service oriented with that staff. Where the department, our road bridge department, requires the staff in order to repair the roadways. Without the staff, we either contract the work out, which is more expensive, or we just flat don't do the work. So, I've committed to the judge that we, with that same number of staff, we can reduce the amount of materials and other equipment that we would be constantly purchasing. We can reduce substantially more than the suggested twenty-five percent that we're looking at a reduction in the revenues for next year four.
Well, I did see a big drop in figures, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't hiring someone we're gonna have to let go of.
No, no, we, we would need those, all of our employees that we have currently to continue providing road repairs to the county in a satisfactory condition, I feel.
I move that we approve the addition of this one maintenance tech from the existing pool of applicants.
Been made a second, and all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, approve, disapprove, payment of the current CMI invoices. Since January two thousand and sixteen, CMI has been charging the county three dollars and thirty-five cents a month slash employee in the testing program. The county did not approve this change in the contract. Yep?
Yeah, the, the end of February, we received a invoice from CMI. We wrote January and February. While looking at it, there was a three dollar and fifty cent per employee charge. We also received through an email notification that the department had gone below the twenty employee count. Therefore, this was being initiated. However, upon review of the current contract that was issued in July of nineteen ninety-six, it is one of those that are continually renewed unless there is a cancellation by either party. That there was no stipulation in that contract for a minimum number of employees. The charge in that contract was strictly on an as-used basis for the DOT required drug testing and alcohol testing. There was a stipulation that had, through the years, there could be an increase in fees for those two items. Not a total reorganization of the fees as they are requesting with this monthly employee charge. Now, three dollars and fifty cents doesn't sound like a lot, but it's basically about fifty-two dollars a month is what we are going to be paying over and above the normal use fees. So currently, we have a hundred and five dollars from the February invoice. We have received a March invoice of fifty-two fifty and an April invoice of forty-nine. And so, talking with the Wana on these, these fees, it's in today's list of bills to be paid, but we wanted to bring it to your attention to see if this is something that we want to further discuss with CMI. Should we cancel the contract and bid, refit the contract for new services? Or go ahead and pay up and continue to pay the three dollars and twenty-five cents a month?
Are you satisfied with their services, testing? Do they quickly test people with each other's own quickly, et cetera?
CMI comes to the office as, as needed. They are required, we're required by DOT regulations to provide the random testing on a quarterly basis. So, they do the drawing of the employees on a quarterly basis and then show up at the office the morning that they want to do the, the testing. They perform the test and I guess the results come to Mary here at the office. And as far as I know, they have done that reasonably quick. We know, we are, get a response from them currently quickly.
Mark, yes?
My opinion would be that it's, it's up to you. Are you satisfied with their services? Do you wanna refer this to our county attorney, discuss whether we're allowed to do this? Give us a fee? Or do you wanna just play advocate for someone new? Or how would you want it?
What do you think?
Well, I don't agree that the way they have handled it is correct and that they basically rewrote the contract without any discussions from us. Now, there are other companies here in the county that can provide the same services. So, you know, I've, four months I've been here, there's only been one test performed. It's been satisfactory. So, I don't know if they are comparative to other companies here in the, in the county or, or not. It's just that they've been the same company since nineteen ninety-six. And the service experience that they have been, been adequate. I just didn't like having the contract rewritten without at least discussing with us whether or not we wanted to pay that additional monthly fee. Maurice, you have something to say?
Mr. Stein and the rest of the supervisors in this county, including the commissioners' corps, would give fifty dollars a month dismissive, as much attention. We didn't give a piece, so the, a third of this amount of time. Group of level employees. We're talking about fifty dollars a month. We're spending, how long have we been on this? Ten, fifteen minutes, right? Come on. And we're talking a million and millions of dollars we spend in this county, and we're talking about fifty bucks. Come on.
All the stuff, all the stuff, if somebody got a probability of contract was written, they'd go hire somebody else. I mean, you're talking about one employee in four months that's been drug tested?
No, no, we've had more than one employee in four months drug tested. What's the thing is, is that we're in the second quarter, so we've been two quarters tested.
But Dale, what's your recommendation? What is your recommendation?
Fifty dollars is fifty dollars. I see, personally, I see no benefit in paying the company three dollars and fifty cents a month for every employee.
Okay, so what Dale turns, if you wanna bid it out?
Re, rebid it for a cost of as-needed or as-tested as the original contract had.
So, what they basically did, if I understand this right and down, is they went from an as-needed basis where it was a fee for service to a monthly charge regardless.
Plus the as-tested fee.
Plus the add.
So we're still paying the testing fee as, as used along with this additional three dollars and fifty cents a month employee fee. So it's not just three, it's just not the fifty dollars a month. It's the fifty dollars a month plus the testing fees, which average about a hundred and fifty dollars per, per test.
In other words, CMI has incorporated an administrative fee for processing the random draws, et cetera.
Right. But for twenty fifty dollars a month and we have them on staff, I mean, they're gonna, they've been there since nineteen ninety-six?
The contract was, was issued.
But they rewrote it.
And they totally rewritten. Now, they have sent us a new contract that I still don't see the three dollars and fifty cents mentioned in it.
So do you just wanna go ahead and rebid it? Get, see what else we can find them to meet your specs? Is that what you're trying to say?
That would be, be my suggestion.
I would move that we allow the road administrator to visit with the county attorney and obtain a...
Road engineer?
Road engineer, excuse me.
That's not, what's on the agenda. On the agenda is paying these bills. There, there's nothing about advertising for new services. The question is whether we pay the two months, whether we pay the three dollars and fifty cents per employee that's been billed.
I mean, we pay the three dollars.
If it's been billed, we just pay for it then. Do you wanna put it on the, on the thirtieth? What we're talking about, about changing it?
Put it on the thirtieth, you know, that's the issue.
That way we don't have to manage or anything. We'll just pay for this and then we'll put it on the thirtieth.
Second.
Shelby? The motion's been made a second to pay, to pay what we've been charged. All the favors say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twelve, acknowledgement that the road and bridge department has established a Facebook account for the citizens to use to notify us of issues on our roadways.
This is more just informational purposes. We had learned here in the last couple of months that there was discussion on Facebook of the road and bridge department along with conditions of roadways. I know in previous PAC meetings in Austin in the past, they had strongly suggested that the counties, you know, work with social media. And so, Alma there in the office has a Facebook account. She knows how to utilize it. So we have opened an account, Carls County Road and Bridge on Facebook. So, if anyone has comments, concerns, we will be putting other information on there also. Road closures, construction work, those type items on that. And get a link onto our website also.
I think that's excellent. I mean, so if somebody, if somebody has a problem, they can, they can send it to y'all right through their Facebook and connect it with y'all?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
The brothers that don't have Facebook?
Yeah.
We still, we still have the phone call, it's just that...
The only advantage on Facebook is they can send you pictures, they can send you all kinds of, you can automatically see the problem.
And there, you'd be, I don't have a Facebook account either. I don't communicate that way, but it's amazing how many people there are out there that do and don't really even use their, their cell phones. They prefer to do it on Facebook, so.
I know the sheriff's department has one and a lot of people use it. Go ahead and put out stuff as, something goes on, road closures and stuff, and they've had a lot of good comments about it, so. I understand everybody uses, uses Facebook, but it's a tool that everybody's starting to use.
I think it's a good idea because a lot of the bus drivers come up to me, I'll tell you, and they send me pictures of the roads and I get it to y'all, but like this, they can send it directly to y'all.
It's pretty bright light though.
I think it's, they'll call me, but the pictures can go to y'all straight.
Is there some type of implementation on county website that says those types of emergency situations of road closures and whatnot are reported for those people that don't have Facebook?
It should also go on to the county website.
Yeah, that's what I've been talking to Mary about, that we're going to establish a process to do that also. Yep.
Try to get it on all the social media?
Because I would imagine most of our older generations don't.
And also, there's another avenue too, is call that iInfo. I don't know, a lot of people didn't wanna sign up for it because they didn't wanna put their cell phone numbers on it, you know, but that's another, that's another thing. It's being used throughout the region.
That's strictly about materials.
Thank you, Dale.
Question?
Appreciate it. Ma'am? Item number thirteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, which employer chooses to fund for employees' health, life, forty K plus ADD and authorized advertisement of requests or proposals for FY two thousand and seventeen county funded employee benefits and employee volunteer benefits? The Wana?
I had submitted some information along with my agenda item request that I'm sure Mary copied and provided to y'all that shows a current breakdown of premiums by type. Currently, the health insurance only premium per month is eighty-four thousand, ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Of that, approximately ten thousand, five hundred is juvenile probation, which leaves approximately seventy-three thousand, four hundred plus dollars as the county's expense. The annual month, or it's not the annual, the monthly premium for the LTD coverage, which is long-term disability, currently is at nineteen hundred, seventy-five dollars and one cent. That would obviously equate to almost twenty-four thousand dollars per year. During a budget workshop presentation, I had commented about possibly dropping the LTD coverage to save some money for the county. The court does not have to go out for proposals. We can just automatically renew with Humana or our health and life that we offer to the employees. But what I need to know is, do we want to continue receiving bids on LTD along with the health and life that are county funded? And then we also offer the employees the option at their cost to cover their dependents on the policies. And there is also a voluntary dental and vision and additional life insurance available at employee cost.
The Wana, I say stay with, stay with Humana and with the health and the life and then keep receiving the, the renewal, I mean, the bids on the, what is it, LTD? What is it?
Long-term.
Long-term disability, the dental, the vision, additional life and the dependents.
So you're saying don't go out for proposals, just stay with Humana?
Yeah, that's only my opinion. Yeah, that's only my opinion, that's, I just went out there, threw mine out there first. Because we've been good with them, they've been good with us, and of course, they, they always work with us, they've worked with us for how long already? Five, six years? And it looks like they always do their best, we can always do it next year, because we don't have to go out.
Although this is, although this is something that's handled through HR, through payroll, through the Treasurer's Office, I couldn't be here today due to a funeral. But I know we have had billing issues this year with Humana, so it hadn't been all smooth like that, so we've had issues.
Not only been here a short time, but correct me, but has Humana been about the only one that has bid on the business?
They, we, I think, received two additional bids last year, but they were much higher, higher out of the ballpark for the deductible that we offered, yes.
Thank you, Mary. Either then, and Mary fewer than not competitive.
I'm sorry, I just didn't make the, I just didn't drop everything, because, you know, it's up to the individual to, 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 they want LTD, they want the vision or whatever, but the LTD to me is, wherever I've worked, it's always been something you subscribe yourself to company, didn't pay nothing for you. And I think that's what we should treat this here.
We've only had one LTD claim since we have offered LTD insurance.
And you have, how many people on it presently? Can you tell how many we have participated?
I don't have my calculator up here, but it says a hundred and sixty-one for health insurance, but that includes spouses and children also.
And LTD is a hundred and sixty, is what I have on this sheet here?
Yes. Okay, we have a hundred and sixty-one employees, five employees plus spouse, seven employees plus children, and one family coverage on the health.
That's where we get to ninety-eight thousand?
Right, and of that eighty-four thousand ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents is county and juvenile probation.
Tell me which segment again, and Shelby brought it up, did not pay much, was it vision or dental?
The employee pays any elective vision or dental coverage. What Shelby was referencing was the LTD, the long-term disability. Whether to make that a bid product, but at employee cost, or a bid product, could we go out for bids at employer cost, as it is now?
I'd say it be employer cost, that would make a decision.
I, I think that's right, in words, okay, let me see if I understand this right. Presently, if you want dental, you pay for it. If you want vision, you pay for it.
Correct.
If you want LTD...
Voluntary life, you pay for it.
I was gonna say, if you want LTD, the county is presently paying for it.
Right, it's not an optional coverage, it is part of the county.
The package, I think it should become optional.
What, what is the cost on it?
I believe it's forty-one cents per hundred of salary per month, with a cap of sixty thousand dollar salary.
So, a few dollars increase?
If it's, if the cost is nominal, and if these other things are already made optional, I think it needs to be made optional. Do you have a feeling, a thought?
Well, there's a ninety-day period from the time that you're declared disabled before you can start receiving benefits, if I'm not mistaken. It does total up to about twenty-four thousand dollars a year, that's a substantial expense for no benefits per se. It's just not my decision, of course.
I would move that we move long-term disability from a county-paid position to an employee option. Is that what you need?
That's part of it, yes.
That's part of it.
Now, are we gonna advertise for proposals, or are we just gonna stick with Humana?
And that we would remain with Humana. We have a question?
Y'all ever received any notes? I mean, I know from a personal perspective, we have had tremendous hikes in our premiums, and we did notes annually of increasing rates. I mean, it's just a, it's just a very turbulent high in insurance business right now, and so hopefully, there'll be some changes.
When, when...
I would just be speculative, but just assuming it would, if there hasn't been, I mean, I, I can't imagine you haven't had premium hikes. I mean, we, we get them regularly on a, on a personal basis.
We've had premium hikes, but they've been very nominal, and we have been fortunate being approved, that they've been nominal. And if we stay with Humana, not for fiscal year seventeen, but for fiscal year eighteen, because we have reached silver status with the required number of participants, whatever our premiums end up being for fiscal year seventeen with Humana, they will be frozen for eighteen.
I, like I said, I'm, I am very much in favor of bidding everything and competitiveness in the marketplace, but while the little time I've been here, there hasn't been much competitiveness, it's been pretty much Humana's field that, that...
I, I will say Jess Williams, Jr., has done a good job with the market, trying to keep Humana in line.
It's, it's a rocky situation.
We have a motion on the table. The motion is to stay with Humana for the health and life, and go out for LTD, dental vision, and depend, I mean, that's optional?
Not go out for, that would just become optional coverage, as that's what Humana went off.
LTD would...
Take the ATD.
The others are already optional.
Yes.
Correct.
So, we are only changing LTD from paid to optional. That's what I was headed to, if I switch over.
Shelby, second. It's been made, a second all the favors, aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item, item number fourteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing advertisement for request or qualifications for FY two thousand sixteen independent audit. Luanne?
There's been much discussion whether to go out for RFQs, request for qualifications for the county's annual independent audit. So, it is on the agenda to see if Commissioners' Court wants to proceed with that.
This will be the third year for the firm we have presently.
Visually.
That's right.
It's third of four. I think we're in the fourth.
We're in the fourth.
I realize that you've mentioned to us several times that there are a limited number of firms that do this, but I think, personally, I think that we're due for a change, another set of eyes to look at things, if they're available on a competitive basis, so I would, I would favor going after the proposals.
Just as a little bit of information, we're probably gonna pay anywhere in the area of thirty-five to forty-five thousand for the completion of fiscal year fifteen's audit. I would expect that you can anticipate quite a bit higher if you contract with a new firm, because of course, they will have to come in and get acquainted with the system, with how things, the mechanics of how everything works. So, they will be voting more time. Not that money should preclude you from a good independent audit, but I just want y'all to be aware that there could be associated higher costs.
But they've done a good job of their, they know everything about it. What's going on?
I don't have a, an axe to grind with a firm, but I know I tend to make the same mistakes over and over again, unfortunately. And I'm not saying they're making mistakes, but I think that perhaps it's time that someone else, if they're available competitively, from the proposals that we take a look at, if, you know, that's my, my approach. I would move that we approve the authorizing of advertisement for requests for qualifications for the FY two thousand sixteen independent audit, as stated by the auditor.
Second. The same company has the option to bid, and if they're low bidders, they get the option.
That's, that's no plus with that.
I would caution that when these come in and you're deciding on an award, you don't just consider the cost, you consider the experience.
Do I know again?
I was gonna say, there's, there's, you need to look at the whole package.
Correct.
And, and I'm not faulting you, because, you know, I'm certainly cognizant of the fact that we don't compromise, but I think that we, we're, we're due an opportunity for someone else to look at it.
I'll second that, Maury.
Motion's been made, a second all the favors, aye. Any opposed? Aye, opposed. Motion passes three to one. Item number fifteen, right, thank you, Luanne. Item number fifteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, the adding of two notaries, Robert Ebermann, Sharon Chesser for the Sheriff's Department, add the new JOD to the department, not having anyone that is a notary on the administrative staff.
The reason I put this on the agenda, this item, was Sharon and Robert were my notaries, were notaries, but they were using their own notaries, they're personal, and they're about to expire, and I want to get one through the county. And that's why I'm asking for, for two notaries to be in the administration area.
Cause, Sharon.
I'm sorry, maybe Luanne can help me.
Just to the bond, it's just...
I was gonna say, it's not much.
We go through corns insurance all the time, and Kennedy's...
And we have an employee blanket lump bond that covers all the county-funded notaries, so it will be a nominal, nominal fee. Add two more.
I'm whether we allow the sheriff to have Robert Ebermann, Sharon Chesser for Sheriff's Department as new jail staff with the notary approval?
Second. I don't know if you trust those two.
Motion's been made, a second all the favors, aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item number sixteen, acknowledge the acceptance of six thousand two hundred dollars donation from Conical Phillips to be used by the Sheriff's Department at the discretion of the sheriff.
Again, this year, we received a donation from Conical Phillips, they usually donate every year, I'm just bringing it to y'all's attention.
Thank you, sheriff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Conical Phillips, too. Item number seventeen, discuss, approve, disapprove, development of county strategic plan for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, plan year with contract assistance. Shelby?
As y'all know, we approve the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, and Langford and Associates were the winning company for that. I was talking with their representatives one day, and, and I've had a big concern that Corners County, you know, with eighty percent of our wealth tied to, or more, I guess, tied to, to the industry, oil industry and minerals, you know, what are we doing to, to make sure that we can keep functioning as a county government with other income if this, whatever, would all go away? Well, it never has gone away, and it probably will go away, but as y'all can see, we've had a big reduction in what, in what we're gonna be receiving this year in, in wealth, and as well as in new, new, new assets. So, talking with, with them one day, I asked about, and Judge Long was there too, and we asked about, well, I asked about creating a strategic plan for the county with first getting a snapshot of the county, seeing what we, our demographic and economic data was, and maybe create some maps, whatever, we, we can, you know, needed to do, and then from there, once we get a big snapshot of the county, we could go ahead and, and, and look at, at what we actually have. I mean, we've had this, we've had this question about what do we have? Well, I'm sorry to say, I don't think we really know. And if you don't, and this is kind of unheard of for counties to do this, because cities do it all the time, they, they'll create a strategic plan. And, and my thing was that we could get a snapshot of the county, we could get a, a, a map, or a, a vision that we could perceive further, you know, how to keep the county going, is, is our future needs would be, or, and, and then where our needs are, we could help that in the budgeting process, as well as aiding other courts in implementing this plan. The key to it, if we would do this, would be that we would have to make sure we followed the plan. It can't be something that cannot be put on the shelf. Mr. Reardon?
Thanks, before we, I would suggest this to the Commissioners' Court, that before we start getting contracts for a strategic plan, this Commissioners' Court has to get down, have one of your meetings, whatever, and you need to come up with a vision for this county. I mean, you have to have some kind of a blueprint for somebody to, to develop a strategic platform, I mean, you just can't say go develop a strategic plan.
You're right, and, and, but the only way to, to, to get that vision is first you have to get that snapshot of the county.
You have to pay somebody to do that.
But when you say snapshot, what, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to getting all the economic data together. I'm referring to the, what I mean by that is also, is also the, the labor statistics, the railroad commission information, getting our lane miles all in line, water, water, our low water crossings, our population densities, all the locations we have in the county that, that are historical, what have you, appraisal district data, all the local data that we have to, to put into a, a, I want to say like a database, but it, but it gives us an idea, we can analyze that data and see what we, what we need to do, where we're at, what we have. We don't know, at least in my opinion, I don't think we know. I mean, and I'm just trying, I'm throwing this out there because we need to do something, and if we don't, we, we, it's gonna be business as usual.
We need to do something besides build a ten million dollar courthouse, a one-point-five million dollar EMS building. I mean, those, those are the kind of things that we're spending money on, on a tremendous amount of money, and, and we still have the dirt road issue, you know, it's unsustainable, and you're exactly right, this is unsustainable without the oil and gas.
And, and that's all I'm trying to do is, you're, you're a hundred percent right. It's trying to find a way that, that we can, somebody spearhead us in a direction that we need to go, and, and to identify our strengths as well as identify our weaknesses. Maurice?
We don't, I don't think any of us disagree with that plan, because we don't have a pipeline. But you can't bring anybody in here, I don't care how well-funded they are, or how much you want to pay them, unless the Commissioners' Court, you know, and the other folks here in the county, it's five people, it's involved everybody in the county. You gotta come up with a vision, you have to have some idea where you want this county to go. But we've been preaching that to this, to the Commissioners' Court for ten years, and that's, you know, Commissioners' Court's always too busy for that. Well, you need to take some time before you can bring somebody in here and say, you know, we have this, we have that, this is our vision for ten years from now, or twenty years from now, and that can all change, but without that vision, without, without giving them a place to start, or a place to go to, you're just spending money for nothing.
I've got the representatives to hear from Langford and Associates, kind of, not that they're gonna be the ones, or whoever, but to give us an idea of some of the discussion that, that I've had with them, and I have Judy Langford and Donna Chatham in the back, I don't know the two gentlemen, Judy gonna go up to that mic and explain what we talked about?
Well, we were talking, but like Shelby said, was we were talking about hazard mitigation for the county, and that entered into then further planning for the county, and I've worked with Corners County on and off for fifteen years, twenty years, Luanne, I mean, yes, yes, a long time. So, one of the things is, as far as planning is concerned, and it's true about all counties, cities do strategic planning all the time and try to decide how best to envision the future for the, for the cities. Counties have, have a need for it, just hasn't been really out there to do so, so in talking with... it, just hasn't been really out there to do so, so, in talking with Commissioner Dubny, we brought in some other experts to, to talk to you about what one might look like, and so I brought with me today Joe Cantalupo and Chris Stewart from K-Freeze Associates, they are planners, and they have a small presentation they, I would like them to give to you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have the key C U shirt on?
I know. Thanks for all of that.
Well, thank you for taking the time out of your agenda to visit with me. My name is Chris Stewart, I'm senior planner with K-Freeze and Associates, I've been a practicing planner for the city, planning director for the city of Marble Falls, and I've worked with the city of Georgetown, that's kind of my background, and then I started consulting about fifteen years ago, and worked with a number of, of communities throughout central and south Texas, and mostly I've been working with, with cities over this time.
Can we get one more copy?
Oh, Mr. Stewart?
Working with cities on kind of growth management challenges, cities, as you know, have a lot more tools at their disposal that the legislature has granted them, but the counties are still facing the same types of realities of managing what, what their service needs are, with the realities of their, their budgets and their financial model, so in talking with Judy about this, it kind of really felt natural that we could, we could work in the same kind of planning process that we do with the city, just work with the county, and we're just looking at the information from a different height, maybe we're not at ten thousand feet like we are working with the city, but we're at thirty thousand feet for a little bit, and then we come back, back down to ten thousand feet. So basically, the planning process that, that I've proposed here with you guys takes us through a snapshot process first, which we evaluate data, data that's out there, it has to be gathered and collected from a number of different sources to kind of paint the picture of where we are, we help you summarize that baseline information, and we then go on to a capabilities assessment, where we look at, okay, this is what we have, and how do we maximize the use of this? We then try and apply some future growth scenarios, so they may involve their hypothetical scenario, we can't look into a crystal ball and know exactly what's gonna happen in the future, but we can look forward and make some, some assumptions that help us make better decisions, and then finally, after evaluating those, we'll go into a strategic, an implementation plan, and that's where we, we roadmap it out, how we're gonna get things done. Let's talk a little bit about the snapshot, because really, a lot of the effort is involved in pulling together this information, so that we, we can put in numbers terms what we're dealing with, whether it's lane miles, or acres, or square miles, or number of homes, or number of septic tanks, or a number of wells, et cetera, we need to start quantifying those things, so we know, we really know what we're talking about, alright? We can look at some essential population figures, they only tell us so much, sometimes you have to dig a little bit into the housing data that's behind it, you have to dig into some of the, the economic spending data, how are people spending their money, we can evaluate that, I, I put in here an example of, of a commuting pattern that we evaluated for a city down in the valley recently, that really tells the story for that community. The commuting pattern tells us, for example, how many people are coming into the county to work, how many are leaving the county to work, and how many are staying put in the county, and that's an indicator of economic health. Obviously, as part of the economic data, we would also be looking at your tax rate history, your valuation history, your ad valorem revenue history, what you're actually capturing, as well as some other key indicators, such as oil and gas, motor vehicle registrations, fuel sales taxes, et cetera. We would also be able to, to do a workforce industry profile, as we know, workforce industry changed dramatically over the last three years, and it's changing again, and we want to understand the particulars about how that's happening, and that's kind of a thirty thousand foot view of how that's going, of how that's happening. We use a, y'all familiar with geographic information systems, GIS, which is basically, it's computer map and computer data, and we can link the two up and evaluate different types of information. We would develop a set of maps for you guys, basically an atlas that describes the administrative areas that you're dealing with, obviously the county boundary and precinct boundaries, but also who are the water service providers, and what are their service areas? What about the school districts? Where are their, where are their boundaries? Other special districts, or their underground water districts, for example? We would look at natural areas, street, the creeks, the streams, the rivers, the floodplains, areas that we have water quality concerns, or at least we know that the state has a water quality concern, we'd be able to map that and, and discuss what those concerns are, as well as the boundaries, the known boundaries of the groundwater sources that many of the private landowners and some of the water utility providers rely on. Also critically, because this is really a, a large part of your budget, and also a large part of why the residents of the county rely on you guys, is your road infrastructure. What does your road infrastructure look like? How many miles of paved versus unpaid road do you have? Do you know what your easements and right-of-way are? We would inventory your, your county-owned facilities, so, I mean, beyond just the courthouse and the courthouse annex, where do you have other facilities that are of importance, whether it's something that you operate day-to-day out of, or something that's a cultural resource that we need to know about and plan for. You would also be able to evaluate planning, because we could look at agricultural versus residential, versus commercial, versus industrial. I put, I put this, this map in the, in the packet for you, this is another county that I've left nameless for the time being, being that they're not so far from you guys, but facing similar issues. This map is an example of showing population density relative to areas that have water service providers with the certificate of convenience and necessity. There's large areas of the county, this county that are uncertificated, do not have any water service provider taking care of them, and then this is a map of all the oil and gas well locations, all the wellhead locations, so it paints a very interesting picture, it, it's their story, this is that county's story, but that's an example of the type of information that we can, we can help you guys develop. When we get to capabilities assessment, we want to talk about really what are, what is the legal basis, what is your basis under the statutes for being able to, to carry out county functions, whether it's road system, or managing subdivisions, certain business occupations, sewer facilities, et cetera, and we also talk, we can also talk about intergovernmental relations, when you're dealing with cities, particularly on questions of annexation, that you guys are able to talk to the cities in a way that avoids conflicts, that really helps the taxpayers, because in essence, those are, y'all are sharing the taxpayer base there, talk a little bit about some of the regional organizations that are going in at the same time. The second phase, we would, we would develop a set of growth projections, we can come up with a number of different scenarios, typically I use a high, medium, low growth scenario, so we can see what plays out if one of those futures tends to be the dominant course that the county takes. We can look at population and then translate that into ad valorem growth rate, and project out what your, your levy may be ten, fifteen years from now. Finally, the strategic policy and implementation, we would prepare for you a set of chapters within a document that has learned from the baseline analysis, has incorporated all the thoughts going into the population projections, and how those are managed, the growth projections, and says, okay, with respect to transportation, the, these should be our, our goals, these should be our policies, and these are the things that we do that support those policies and help us achieve the goals. We do that exercise for transportation, for natural resources, for water, for wastewater, for economic development and tourism, and finally for facilities. So those are the, those are the three phases of the strategic planning process that I had envisioned would be helpful for you guys, I'm really, I'm looking forward to an opportunity to talk to you in more detail about how this may be able to be, may be able to be tailored, maybe a little bit more custom fit, maybe things that you guys are more concerned about than others, you may be more concerned about transportation than you are about, about water supply, but to the extent that all those things are interrelated, and they all have an impact in one way or another, on your functions as county government, we think it's helpful to look at them all together, and help develop some strategy to be able to move forward. So anyway, that's, that's why I had to share, I appreciate your time again, I'm available if there are any, any questions. Thank you, Chris.
Got a couple questions, yeah, one, without you directing this county whatsoever, from the Commission Court, if you so kind of a natty and winky at the door, did you do that without that, that thing that you're...
Well, what I do, what I do is, is start with some basic numbers, and that's what we're proposing to do, let's start researching some basic numbers.
So what you're talking about is basically gathering data, because of the Commissions Court, that we already have access to, so if they can theoretically come up with a direction with its calendar?
I'm gonna be gathering data that a lot of times is not just readily available, it's not just a question of doing a Google search, and oh, it says it's ten thousand, and that's the number we use. A lot of these data sources, you have to really dig in, and have access to some of these databases that aren't just like...
Let me give you just a very small resume on that stuff, I'm retired clerk from Mexico, that's been my entire career in operations.
Yes, sir.
And I'm here to tell you straight up, Mark, that you can't do your job until this Commission Court, or in my case, my man, he, he, he do what he wants done with that operation, I can't just about to start getting data, because I had no idea what he was looking for, and I have a responsibility to him, and he has a responsibility to me, we have sitting in the audience, a very successful strategic investment plan, and I can tell you without a vision of where he wants to go with his, with his investments, he can't do anything, we don't have a plan in this county, we can't hire somebody, develop a plan without giving you some information of where we want this county to go, that's my opinion, and for us to hire an organization to go out and collect a lot of data, for example, our roads, they're the ones that are in here, we are now trying to, to develop a road plan, and we essentially refuse to do, and you're gonna come in here and you're gonna tell us all the information, we spent over a million dollars with a firm to come in here and develop a road plan for us, and they developed absolutely zero. So, quite frankly, in tax, number one, they're spending my money, they're tired of spending my money, and getting zero results, because they, you know, if somebody comes in here and says, I can do this for you, when basically, we took the time to hire a planner, we can do it ourselves, we don't have the money for that, but the information is available, math is a big, but that's, that's part of the job.
Thank you, Mr. Yard. Have y'all worked for counties before you mentioned most, most of your business has been with cities?
Most of my personal, my personal experience has been with cities, and then the part of that is always working with county, because you're always talking about annexations, you're always talking about subdivisions in the ETJ, et cetera, my boss, Joe Cantalupo, is a transportation planner, whereas I'm more of an energy planner, Joe has worked extensively with counties, really fast-growing counties, such as Hayes County, on a number of transportation issues, so we're, we're very, we feel very comfortable, confident working in a county environment, obviously, Ms. Langford has, has several decades of experience working with, working with counties, and fifteen years here in Corns County.
Does anyone have an idea about the judge's deal on this? This is pretty big, I don't think we have none to be here.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm not asking anybody to approve anything today, because, you know, if you look at the very last, as a partner, it did, it does say about a vision statement, and we're probably gonna have to sit down, it's because like me, I'm kinda, I'm worried about the economic development part of it, about the economics and, and transportation, and I've got some other issues I'm concerned about, Pete, you may have some other concerns, you have, Commissioner Ozos perhaps, you, David, you may have some, but everything we do, it's gonna tie down to, to, you know, we need to tailor it to our needs, and, and, and the judge has some issues too, and everything we do is gonna be tied to, to budgets later on, not maybe, well, within the future, we may, it, but it's something that we need to probably sit down, I know we need to sit down, and, and have a further discussion on a workshop, my thing was just try to get some conversation started, to see what we could do, and, but everybody, have, every elected head should have a vision of, in every department, we, we should all, this should be at all a, a team, a team concept on how we come up with this issue, you know, we may not do none of it, we may do parts of it, I don't know, but it, a lot of it's gonna depend on what, on what we as a, a whole, as a, a county decide what we want to do, that, you know, Maurice has got a, Yard has got a, a good, a deal too, you know, he's got, made some good comments, I know, I know the halls have made good comments, there's a, I've heard a lot of elected officials make some good comments, but yet, it's something that the court's gonna need to, to somewheres decide one day, we need to take a stand and, and actually come up with a vision, a plan to move this county forward, and not just rely on eighty-five, eighty percent of that could go, that goes down, or could go up, and everybody's here, when he goes down, we're all struggling, I mean, and, and you see what we're gonna be doing in a budget, budget year this coming year, is there's gonna be some cuts that are gonna be made, and some rightful cuts, but the idea is that who's ever sitting in these chairs needs to have, and no court has ever done this, to sit there and try to plan, as Mr. Yard pointed out, nobody's ever planned, nobody's ever put up a vision, so what we're trying to do now is, I mean, is trying to get something, something started where we have a conversation, we can maybe be thinking about a plan or, or a vision to, to move the county forward, to sustain what we have, if anything, try to increase the economic development of this county, because God knows, the economic... the economics is not that good.
I mean, you know, just an example, I know this is a horse to beat to death, but the commission court came out and said, we're going to figure out a rule this county by 2020. That's a vision. It's an idea, something that you can work on. I mean, you can't do something that simple. It doesn't have to be about roads. If any subject in this county that you want to.
Reduce crime, whatever.
Whatever. You know, if you can't come up with four or five things that you want this county to do over a period of time, you just sit up there taking up space and wish in my air. Really?
Going back to road and bridge, I mean, I, I've asked every one of you what your vision is for the county in, in that regards, and I never get an answer. We hired a professional firm, Corpus Christi, who's paid them in over a million dollars. I actually have a stack of papers, probably a hundred thick of roads that he designated to work on in this county. I've got actually three different pieces of paper of roads to be worked on. And you know what? Some of those roads have never even been touched because the plans were never even, you know, none of you had come together as a county to decide what you want to do.
Would they like?
There's areas in precinct four that have not literally been touched since Jeffrey Weasterly cut up the roads.
I didn't mean for this to turn into heat up the commissioners. Okay? Not my intent.
Working together as a plan.
Hire a firm regardless of whether it's this firm or any other firm, without putting up on the wall or the screen, an idea that the commissioners court has for this county in some period of time is just a waste of exercise. We've got to, we have to be ready to hire somebody to do a job for us.
Well, I, I do see, I understand what you're saying, and I see as planning that part of the bringing the commissioners together. The way counties were set up many, many moons ago, and we have a bunch of rural counties that are now becoming less rural and more urban, that counties existed under the laws of the state of Texas, under a set of laws that to some degree have, have, they've outstood their time. And, you know, we've, we try to do plans so that in cities, so that you can have that vision. And I understand what you're saying, they need to have a vision before you can do a plan. Well, I think it's a unified effort.
I do not.
Well, I do because if you don't bring your commissioners.
If I were standing by that point, I'd have the same view that you got.
Well, I can appreciate that. I, I do work with a lot of cities and counties, and I appreciate the commissioners court inviting us out to talk about this and that it's a, it's a step in the right direction to unify and to try to pull something together to try to get a vision for the county.
With consideration to what everyone has said, I'm probably the worst planner, header of anyone here, unfortunately. I'm, I'm a trees person, not a forest person. And.
Ain't got no trees today.
I ain't got no trees today. Anyway, tree huckers got them all. Anyway, the point being is I have been involved a couple of times with the things, primarily with the extension service and with what used to be soil conservation. And, and they would have a community meeting, a citizens meeting if you had had it, and a workshop, and I heard Shelby mention that word a moment ago, where everyone gets to voice what they feel is important, and the group parses them and comes up with some goals, a vision, if you'll call it that. And then you work backward from there, not from the bottom up, you work from the top down, if you want to call it that. And I'm not faulting what you're saying or what you're doing because some of this becomes important at, at that point, but without a, without that part of it, and I'm looking at the federal government, they're the, you know, don't say it, but anyway, you know, you're, maybe there, that's absolutely the wrong for you to take. Now, I'm going to jump off the subject just a second, I'll shut up a second. Dale, you've probably been around the block as many times as, more times than most of us on this. I mean, in a general sense, and not poking at you as the road administrator slash engineer, what are your experiences with these sort of things? Can you give us any insight? Can you give me any insights as a trees person?
Yeah, as you say, through the 35 years of transportation, there's planning done all the time. And it does take a direction as to where you want to go before you can come up with the details of the plan. But if you haven't ever done it, you know, you four or five with the judge, counties have been stated normally don't plan for the future, it's more reactive, and that's what's happened here. That's what Mike has been doing with road and bridge, and that's where my expertise is, so, and I think that's where most of you all are most interested, that's the biggest thing that you all use. It's been reactive. There hasn't been any forethought put into the future as to where we need to go and what we need to plan for. So without that skill, without even the basics, I think you're going to have to have professionals come in and guide you through that process. And as they, they have said, I think your first process is to come up with those visions. But you can't just sit down on your own and go through the process. There is a procedure to do that, and I think there needs to be some guidance from professionals in order to get you on that road.
I just want to express this one thing to remind you all as we're, we're discussing this issue of professionals. We hired a salary survey company to come in and give us a salary survey, and the first $25,000 to $27,000 was spent, you just basically didn't like the salary survey. So that one went in the drawer and you decided not to use it. So we decided to hire another set of professionals and make a second one. And with the second salary survey, you used some of it, you didn't use some of it, but it was cherry picked according to whatever the assistant or the office was. It was really cherry picking, virtually for all practical purposes, wasn't very useful. The same thing happened with the road and bridge. We hired a professional company under, under, Mr. David, under Brink of Renee Smith Engineering. And, you know, after a million dollars and $20 million budget to the last two years, we've had $40 million in our road and bridge budget still yet as not having a discussion between the four of you of what the goal is for the county, the roads were cherry picked. And, and it's $40 million into it. And so you can hire professionals and they can help you, but you have to decide what's best for the county and the future of the county. And it's not about what my precinct gets and what my road gets and what's best for me or maybe what kind of kickback I can get or what kind of deal I can make with whatever energy company I can. That's what we see as taxpayers. And, and, you know, I can tell you, having attended these meetings when our budget was $3 million and we were poor, you know, deciding to build this building for $7 million was not a smart decision at that point. It was not. When you drive around to other counties, you see them in old banks, old car dealerships, old grocery stores, and they're grugal and they're fiscally responsible because they care about the citizens and they care about the county. And you have to care about the citizens and the county and come together as the goal. We can hire professionals and hire professionals and hire professionals. But if you don't care whether people in your, in your precinct can get up and down their road, we're just wasting our money on professionals. So you have to decide what you want for the county and perhaps what you want for the future of your county. If you have children that are going to stay here and that actually are going to inherit people's land or want to keep running people's ranches or people's industries or businesses, what do you want them to be able to, to stay here or just move out of the county and go get a job somewhere else? Because.
That's what you have.
That's what you have happening, unfortunately. And we have a wonderful opportunity. You've been blessed with money beyond belief, beyond any other county practically in this state. We are a super wealthy county. So what are we going to do with it? Are we going to do the same thing we did with your ringing mine money and look back and say, you know what, as people would tell us coming down our road, you're still driving down wagon trails? You're going to have to decide what you want for the county before the professionals can help you.
Shelby, what did you want to do? Item, what do you want to do with this agenda?
All I want to do is start a discussion of it, and I was hoping the judge would be here, but to give, to set up a workshop so we can get this process started if we choose to do it.
So you want to just move along and set up something for workshop?
Let's, let's just informally leave it and then get together.
But I wanted the court to, I just wanted to get that information out there.
It's a great idea.
I mean.
But you're not fucking the idea? We're not.
I'm, I agree, I know you're not, but I'm going to say, I just wanted to get this conversation started and get us going in a direction. I mean, we just can't sit there and do nothing anymore, and that's the only thing I'm trying to do.
We, we haven't done nothing. We've been sitting there spending money. I've been watching.
You're, you're right.
Lots of money, lots of buildings, lots of just bulk funding like the Wozniak and with, with no, no accountability. You just let him do what he wants, and that's, that's insane. You wouldn't run your business like that. None of you would. And, and to sit out here and watch it happen, it's just, it's disturbing.
But Shelby, you're right.
It's good. I mean, starting a conversation. But we're not gullible, and y'all need to know. We're going, we're going to speak our minds and you're going to hear about it because we've been taken to the cleaner so many times, at some point you got to stand up and say, you know, enough's enough.
The best plans is listen to everybody.
At any.
Effectively listen to everybody.
Any way of facilitating this workshop, and I'm going back to Dale's idea, and I'm not saying hire somebody, but any, any way of facilitating it that you have would be greatly appreciated because I'm, I'm kind of in a loss, I hate to say it, but I'm in a loss for a sense of direction. And maybe, maybe Dale is our facilitator. I don't know. He'll.
I'm a highway engineer and I don't do the touchy-tchy stuff.
Oh.
And that's, and that's the whole thing. Nobody on this court, I think, knows how to get this thing started.
I mean, I've, like I say, I've participated in things, but I've not been the moderator, I'll put it like that. I've been.
Hey, can listen Maurice, are you that planner that you was mentioning about a while ago?
Are you the facilitator?
Are you the facilitator?
I made it happen.
Well, come in.
He told me which way was north, told me what the, what the plan of attack was, and I made it happen.
I mean, and that's not.
I can sit here, I mean, I could be a facilitator, but without you five, you five sitting right there, come up with that idea. Doesn't matter what the idea, whether it's road, whether it's personnel, whether it's, doesn't matter. But you got, you know, I want this kind of to look like something in 2020, 2025, pick a date, pick a date, not flock of copies. Everything changed. All I'm saying is, and we've been saying this for at least eight years, if we've got to have some kind of roadmap that we can follow, and then you say, okay, here's the vision, we put it up on the board, and then you hire a group of community and say, how are we going to get there? I want you to go out here, gather your data, do what you want, and show us how to get to that vision in 2020. And you've got six months. Phase one, phase two, phase three, go on with the county.
I'd suggest that we get the, we get with the judge, notify the judge and select a date, and, and within, within the, between, other this remaining, what this calendar is, I don't know.
Do you want to talk with the judge and Shelby and set up something?
And set up a workshop date.
We don't want to set one up right now because.
No.
Our schedule is.
Yeah, I want to set up a date where the judge could be here and we can.
The other thing is make it accessible at a time of day that's accessible to all the population. We're probably going to have an evening workshop if you want to get citizenry in it, and give a long enough lead time, don't make it a week, give it two or three or four weeks or a month, some amount of time where it can be well advertised and talked up or wind up with a very few people here and not getting very much done. And that's a loss.
And I agree.
It has taken us, it has taken us 150 years to get to this point. Two weeks of.
This commission court could do that? I would supervise the monument to the commission court, developing a vision for this county. I mean, it's about damn time.
But it can't just be a vision, it has to be enacted.
Well, absolutely. But you can't start, you know, driving until you know which way you're going.
All right. You want to do, guys, move along?
Kind of will be back in touch.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much for hearing it all out. Guys, we're going to go ahead and move on. Item number 18, this is approved, this is approved, Caris County Policy Committee recommendations on changes to vacation accrual and use changing sick time to PTO, which is paid time off does eliminating sick pool, reinforcing job posting process. Shelby?
Hey, I have a sheet in y'all's possession, I believe, that says, May 31st, 2016, recommendations to the court on change of vacation policy to allow employees to be able to use accrued vacation after 90-day introductory period. Current practice is to have employees wait until one year anniversary before the vacation can be taken, and also time clock system will be adjusted to reflect accruals for the same way we show sick time and comp, so we're trying to ask that we allow that change in the policy.
Let you go ahead and read along with.
And the second one is change of sick time to PTO, which is paid time off to be used for any time off requested sick appointments added to vacation, et cetera, with the department to hit approval. Past practices have been that the employee ran out of other time, out of any other time vacation, example, vacation or comp, that sick time was to be used to complete the hours of which many cases, that wasn't true because it wouldn't, wouldn't true sick time. Accrual or PTO time will be exactly as sick time in the past. This, if we go to this, this will eliminate the sick pool due to the specific requirements for existence of sick leave pool policy. We'd like to set up meetings with the employees to communicate to the employees of, as critical understanding, PTO is now to be used in lieu of previous sick bank with no long, which will no longer exist. And the committee continues to work under the policies to include our drug and alcohol policy, new employee orientation program policy menu.
So this is. The item that you put on here, right, Shelby? Yeah. So basically, what's being said is that the employees have been using the sick time off for part of the vacation or just because they need the time off. It's not actually been for sick time?
It's not really been true sick time, which in essence is, I guess you might say, is misrepresentation or it's fraud.
Falsifying record.
Falsification of record, yeah. And this way.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner. On number one, change vacation policy to allow the employees to be able to use accrued vacation after 90-day introductory period. So you want them to be able to use their vacation time as soon as the 90 days is up, not wait the year?
Yeah, it's whatever they've accrued.
Whatever they've accrued, they can use it after.
Based on so many hours a month.
I, I agree with that. I think that one's right. You want to do this on a, one-on-one, vote on each one's effort?
I move that we approve the change of vacation policy.
Second.
It's been made a second, on item number 18, one.
One.
Yeah, it's been made a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? None. Motion passes on number one, on item number 18, number one.
Just second. Go on. Is this how it works for you?
On number two, Commissioner, change of the sick time PTO paid time off to be used for any time off requested sick appointments, blah, blah, blah. Okay, basically that they're going to be able to use the sick time that was accrued now as PTO?
Right.
So they'll be able to use it either one?
It won't be sick time, it'll be PTO.
All of it.
All of it, part time off. And, and the sick pool policy, the sick pool will go away. No matter how many hours are in it, they will go away.
Is there any way to have anything there in case one of the employees, do you need something over their sick time? Because what if they use it, let's just say they use it for vacation, right? Or whatever it may be, then they get sick. So when they miss, they don't get paid.
So when they solve the thousands of hours are in the sick pool right now.
It's gone.
It just go away?
It's gone.
When you have some people that are using that pool to have cancer that work for the county and some other things that are questioning what they're going to do, I guess they'll just be out on a limb, so just let you know that, so.
Well, that sick pool time has also been quite similar to the LTD. We have not had many employees use it at all.
I understand, but it takes more.
And it also, sick pool, if it changes to PTO, that benefit would not be paid out at separation. If you have five hours on the works, you do not get paid out at separation.
You need to put that in the motion, Commissioner, if it's not going to be paid out by, when it separates.
Right, but if we're changing the name of it, we need to make it specific. Right, but if we're changing the name of it, we need to make it specific that that time is not paid out also. Just comp or vacation.
What will be included specifically in paid time off, will be sick leave currently and what else?
They can use whatever they want.
Holiday time, vacations.
They, no, they can use that time for whatever they need.
I understand.
If they wanna bank it, and keep it for illnesses or doctor's appointments, that's fine. If they wanna use it every month and their supervisor allows it, that's fine.
You're still gonna accrue vacation time, just like you do now.
Okay.
But you're, but the sick time that you normally approve will now be called PTO. So you're not losing any time, it's just being re-categorized.
Does, does anything other than sick leave go into PTO? I mean, vacation time is still accounted for separately?
Correct.
Okay, so really all you're doing is changing the name of sick leave.
So it's not.
And the sick pool goes away.
But, so the, by the sick pool going away, it affects employees that are on it now, right now?
Nobody's using it right now.
Nobody's using it right now?
I don't know. Can you do this unsustainable part?
Sir?
This unsustainable part that we've been talking about, no other businesses are, one person, I mean, you can't do it like that.
So I move that we go ahead. I move that we go ahead and change the sick time to PTO, paid time off.
Second.
Okay, uh, it's been made a second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I oppose. Motion passes three to one.
Well, it's accrued every, it's accrued every pay period. I don't remember what it is. It's four hours per pay period.
Yeah, they are. You ready, guys? Item number, item number 19, reminder that July 1st, 2016 is the deadline for application to the risk control reimbursement program sponsored by TAC. Arthur Shelby?
Back in April, I think it was, the TAC announced there was a risk management services, there was a plan, there was a reimbursement program to assist counties with the risk management pools, uh, create, enhancing their effective, uh, control programs, risk control programs. There was items listed you could apply for, uh, safety equipment, body worn cameras, training, and a bunch of other stuff. Whatever the cost you would do, you'd submit the, for reimbursement to the county, to the, to the TAC's risk management services, and they would reimburse you. If you were a department head, this was no giving it to all, and those who didn't participate, this shame on you.
James, you didn't mention on item 18, reinforcing the job posting process.
I'm sorry, I skipped one. Was it on the?
It's the very last, kind of, kind of the tagline of that item 18, I didn't see.
Oh, also, on the number eight, back to 18, was that, there was a, to remind everybody that if you're gonna post your jobs, make sure you put them on the county website as well.
Well, and it's required in the policy manual that all jobs be posted. It doesn't necessarily say advertised in a periodical, but it needs to be on our website, it needs to be posted in that department, so that anybody and everybody has the opportunity to apply for any openings.
Correct.
And as, as since we wound the clock backward a little bit, um, I would like to compliment the departmental heads that have done so well about reducing comp time. The sheriff's department probably hasn't seen warm bodies as anyone, they've done extremely well. Almost everyone has accomplished something, library's still got one person with some out. I'm not gonna throw a rock at you, but are your people, are you gonna thin theirs down, Dale?
Yes, sir.
I didn't, I don't remember what they were the last time.
This was as of May 20th, David, this printout is as of May 20th, each with our last paycheck.
Did you say thin it down? I, but the last time that I remember it being brought up, county judge said there, it's not going to be any more comp time period. So we're talking about thinning it down?
Well, this is, this is the accumulated comp time that they have in existence.
And again, comp time is zero comp time in the gold. That's both, that's your credit from your office.
Now, sir, I've been building roads for 35 years, I hope it results.
Builds. Building, that was item number, we had gone back to item number 18, and we did 19, we're on item number 20, payment of bills. Different? Scribble?
Okay, if y'all will turn the page, 12. There are several items that I want to point out, and I do have questions on a couple as far as payment. About a third of the way from the bottom on page 12, there's an expenditure for $6,800, that's progress billing on our outside audit. They should be finishing that up within the next couple of weeks. If we don't have it available for presentation on June 14th, we should definitely by June 30th.
How much have we already paid out?
And who you were gonna ask that question, I did not bring that this time, I brought it to you the last time.
We're, we're past, we're already past our base fee, are we not?
I don't think so.
Don't think so?
I think we're under still.
Still under the base fee, okay, thank you.
Two items below that is special counsel fees. Of that $2,608.50, $2,495.50 involves some issues with the GEO contract that Jeff Chapman is working on. If you'll turn to page 13. Court-appointed attorneys in district court, $5,473.75. Juvenile detention services this cycle, $7,595.68. Almost the middle of the page, you will see association dues for $235. This is for bar membership dues for our assistant county attorney, Carrie Ellison. I question that, whether the court wants to pay it, as that has never been paid for any previous county attorney or assistant county attorney by the county. That is their bar membership dues, so if departure from the county, then we have just paid for their annual membership dues.
Has it been paid before, I don't think we should set a precedent.
Well, that is one item that will take specific action by the court.
And we can do that at the end of this campaign, huh?
Yes. A little bit further down that page is an expenditure for conference expense, $613.70. That is registration fee and accommodations for the county treasurer to attend the investment conference in June. I will say, I have a question with that, due to the fact that the court assigned the county investment officer job and duties to myself, as opposed from the treasurer. And I do have an email response from the judge that he does not support the county paying for this in light of having named the auditor as the investment officer for the county, not the treasurer. As she chooses, she can pay for her own way. I need specific action on that item also. Uh, we have an expense for computer repairs out of the treasurer's department, $1,300. She had to have the hard drive replaced on her computer. It had been hacked, there had been someone that actually created a sign-in that had access to her computer, so the hard drive had to be replaced. Uh, another item down, $20,971.50, that's expended on the EMS facility. Those detailed costs are on page three. We have spent $116,664.92 this cycle on the courthouse phase two plans. And legal fees, we have spent $1,190 as far as acquisition of properties.
Court property.
Malloy.
Malloy. That's Jeff Chapman's bill.
And the jail facility this cycle is $68,159.20. The last cycle, we had approved payments to HMC and Northstar. HMC on the jail facility and Northstar on the EMS facility. Lorraine Daly, the architect, called after court had approved the bills and asked us to hold them, because neither company had completed everything that they included, we are still holding those checks. The waste facility for the TCEQ cleanup, this cycle, we're expending $24,720.80 for the open top containers. We're also spending $6,023.84 for the excavator renter, rental, to facilitate that cleanup. On page 14. There are four different insurance entries for the constables, for the vehicle liability insurance that the county covers on their personal vehicles, specific to law enforcement duties. Those range from $201 per annual premium to $134. We are expending $2,513 in this cycle for sheriff's department departmental expenses. Of that, $1,500 is the monthly rental fee for the trailer house offices that was being utilized. They have moved out, those are empty, and if the trailer has not been picked up, it will be picked up. Looks like it's gone. And so we will have one more expenditure for May of that amount. Prisoner detention in this cycle, $10,633. Computer expense in the sheriff's department, $24,702.50. That does include $16,400 for the 16 new computers previously approved by court. $34,945 in sheriff's department vehicles, that is the replacement Tahoe that was previously approved by court. About a third from the bottom is $192 expense titled computers. That was for some time clock issues that had to be fixed with the computer that is specific for time clock import and export. Road materials this cycle, $252,673.59. Contractors, equipment and assistant, $15,587.50. That was on county road 277, 276, 302, and 307. On page 15.
Wait, wait, on 14, there is, three, four, to five further, waystation, are they not building every month, or what?
Which item were you talking about, Peter?
277, 50, I don't step further, I'm off it on my.
No, they had not, they had not built us for three months, correct.
I just didn't know if they had other temporary waystation somewhere.
Gotcha, no, they have not. They were delinquent, all their building. On page 15, we have heavy equipment repairs, $6,485.33. The detail for that expenditure is on page nine. We have parts expended this cycle, $3,579.64. Included in that is $1,285 for a headache rack. All the 275 account numbers, those are all rural fire expenditures. In this cycle, they total $111,000. The last two entries are sheriff's department contribution expenditures, $2,401.13, and EMS department expenditures from contributions, $8,420.42. And the detail for those are on page 11. The total expended this cycle, $836,573.20.
I should've asked Carol, I've been sitting here asleep, but in her department, she had a, you know, postage supplies. Do you have a postage meter?
It's for the, it just comes through me, it's for the entire building.
That's fine. Can you answer some of that? Um, of course, I'm on the one I have, but there's a couple of court-appointed attorneys. No, it ain't, it ain't there, it's McKinnis and Lockridge, Madder, Hennessy and Fisk, and another one, what are those two?
Those relate to GEO.
To GEO?
Yes.
I marked donuts in my, I thought I was scared.
We should get reimbursement, though.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I noticed them, that was it.
What's ASMR, training, Robert?
849, outside audit, is that supposed to be 2015, September 30th, 2015?
Yes.
Yet, ASMR training.
ASMR is a supply to do jail.
With the training.
Medical supplies, they'll come in and give you training along with them, so, uh, I don't know why they would charge for that.
ASMR, that was something that Melissa Ramirez went to.
Okay, yes, I did approve, she had to get her, uh, part of her recertification done in the kitchen, maybe they provided that.
Oh, Robert, while you're, uh, are juveniles any closer to resolution?
We don't know, Commissioner, uh, as you know, he's involved in that serious case, and so, uh, the Navy staff has been working diligently to try to get that done, but as far as I know, it's still a work in progress.
And the other question, generically, how about the jail, good, bad?
Um, as y'all know, we started a week ago, we moved in, we moved all three buildings, the trailer, the old jail, and the annex. So what the administration's completely moved in, uh, we won't receive prisoners till the end of the month, but, uh, we're slowly working towards that progress, we're doing training every day, to win the jailers and that. There are a lot of problems with the building, I'll tell you that right now, and so, but HMC's been gracious enough to provide vendors, I mean, some of the locks don't work, uh, there's plumbing issues all over, the whole building leaks everywhere. The roof's leaking in one of the deals, so there's been issues everywhere. But as soon as we call them, they bring people down, and they've been returning them as we go, so it's been a, a battle, I'll tell you that right now.
Have you made dispatch change yet, or wouldn't you plan to do that?
Yeah, the, the 911 center is completely operational, uh, we did that transition, uh, they're finishing the radio system today. We found some difficulties in the radio system, but they're working those through, and the 911 is there, T-Lex is there. They're installing the commercial electronics, the recording devices today, so we're about 99% done on the emergency operations center, so it's ready to go. So that situation has gone real smoothly, as far as that goes. There was a disruption in phone service for about three hours on the landlines, AT&amp;T had a snafu, they disconnected the old lines, and some reason the computer didn't put them up right away, so there was a little bit of barking going on for about three hours, but anyway, they still had a bunch of different ways to call us, 911 was up, so. But anyway, overall, it's been running smoothly, and we're just trying to work out all the problems.
I'm, I'm sorry that there are problems, but I'm glad at least they're taking care of them.
Yes, they've been, I have to say about HMC, I think they did some shoddy work on some areas, but they have been sending people right away and working through them. There's still the parking lot to do, there's still the retaining wall in the back, there's some busted sidewalks and things like that, that they're gonna come back over the next several weeks and fix.
Please be sure and note these things, so, if Harvard, Jeff, need them for future attention when we get into the.
I certainly wouldn't sign off on the building, wouldn't give them their last payment, until we get all these issues fixed.
That's what I'm sending over, we need to have a pretty good accounting for what we're having to do. Not that I'm after the contractor, but, you know, it's been a, it's been a tooth pulling the whole time, so let's be sure.
There's a bunch of issues, um, I mean, even like the main door of the building wouldn't lock, there's that much gap between the striker and the door, and just things like that, but they've been coming fixing them, and anyway, um, so far they've been very responsive, so I have to give them a little bit of credit for that.
The occupancy says 50?
Yes, because the way the jail was originally designed, it's a 48-bed license, but there's an extra compartment there on the last dorm. It was just to make the building square, so they actually considered a 50-bed, but it's actually occupies 48. But there's no way you could have taken a square building and cut, cut the corner off on the concrete to make it 48. the concrete to make it 48 according to the dimensions, so they considered that extra two little space in the corner, you could put two more beds there. Jail commission doesn't allow that, though.
That's flat upon Calama.
Oh, okay. Robert, did you mention occupation by inmates at the end of the month? That is the end of June, and that's considering that these issues are fixed.
If we're in that situation, we told the court originally 30 days when we got in there, but these issues have to be fixed, we can't. TDC wanted to use it today for that situation across the hall with all these high-risk inmates, but we're just not at that point. We would have to make sure that everything works and everything is in order before we actually put people in this building. We don't want a disaster there, but as you know, and we've sent out a set of house rules to all the departments, department heads, it's gonna be run like a correctional facility. There's no phones, there's no weapons, you come up there, you can get into the lobby, but even our own employees can't carry phones. There's a lot of house rules that are in place that we're adjusting to also, so we're gonna run it like a correctional center. Everything that comes in there has to be in clear bags, if you drink a liquid, it has to be in a clear cup. All of those things are in place, so it's taken some adjustments to get it done, but we're gonna get it done. Certainly don't want to endanger our employees, much less the public, and that's why we want to make sure we run it right. And this old building has swallowed a lot of people, they used to come in and go in and do whatever, no security whatsoever, and there's gonna be security here. We have a Viper Raptor system in the front, once we get through there, if you're a visitor to the facility, you come up there, they'll scan you into the lobby, you have to actually present your driver's license. You run it through a system, it's gonna show whether you're a sex offender or you got any problems, so when you come up there, somebody comes up there, and this is something we bought out of the Chapter 59 money that's all we're talking about, or the donation money that we just bought from the taxidermist and paid for, we decided to put that in there. When you come in there, it's gonna scan your driver's license, it's gonna tell us whether you're a wanted or whether you're a sex offender. So anyway, don't come over here if you're a sex offender, it's gonna beat you right there, so. But anyway, that's the way, so when we invite the general public over there, we're gonna do some tours once we get it up and running, and we'll go through the entire jail and the sheriff's office, so. We saved the county about $12,000 to $15,000 moving all that stuff, just the county employees, the sheriff's office employees moving all of that stuff. So there's a lot of old junk records and everything that's been from 2000, 2001, 2003, we're going through, recording everything that's on county inventory, we're gonna get rid of, and the rest of it we're shredding or destroying. So there's been a big house cleaning, it's been a major undertaking, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your answers, I was very interested in what had happened. We go to the emergency medical, and I could've asked Shelby, but what is NCO control?
Heart monitor.
Heart monitors, okay. What is Southwest Public Safety Vehicle?
Probably had to replace the light or something like it, it's.
It's one of the most safety deals. Inmate medical. Oh, and I had marked what you brought attention on the treasurer, but that's already been brought up. I don't know whether we ought to approve Shelby's conference expense or not, but I guess we will. Dale, on tire repairs, there were a couple of them that were fairly expensive, and just in the rock at you, but were they road calls or something? Unit 113 had tire repair, $123.50, and then it had tire fixed, $94, and it doesn't have a date on it, both were Beasley's. Do you have any recollection of that? Probably were road calls or something.
I think they had a couple of them out on the road, a couple of tractors that needed to be, had the rear tires.
Is 113 a tractor? A truck, I mean, a tractor like farm tractor or a truck?
Seems like the 100s are equipment.
Okay, that would explain the cause. I mean, if it was a rear tractor tire, I understand. I thought it was a little pricey for a truck tire, and I didn't know what it was. Oilfield maintenance, are we about finished with them? The outside contractor, is there something still carried over from the past? Are we still?
They, last month, they did do some additional pipe, and there were a couple of places that I gave instructions to put pipe in, that had been six inches of water standing for three weeks. To me, that required structure, so they put in three pipes on Kendra 304, and with the range we've had the last couple of weeks, there were people that were putting the empty pipes.
I know we discussed the possibility of getting this, and I know we're getting into that, but that's.
Yes, and this next year will be.
Still discussing. Are we still paying for a legislative consultant? Should we be bail on that?
There is a monthly fee to retain his services.
When can we get out of that?
This year's budget.
This year's budget?
I can't even.
I, you know, I have a real problem with hiring a gun that doesn't ever come see. I don't know what you think, but I don't care how good he is, if he can't show up here once in a while in the flesh, but.
I know there's been a lot of discussion about asking him to come and give a report, but I don't know that that's ever happened, that he's been asked. I know he hasn't come, but I don't know if he's been asked.
Well, Dave, I will say that we can't do what they do for us, and they have worked as well the last time.
Well, I'm sure that.
How do we know that?
I've been up there, Maurice.
Why, if he comes down here and talks to us, we don't, I don't know that. You never say anything about it in court.
All right.
I mean, it's nice if he does that, but you don't ever share what you know, you just sit there and look at it. That is good work.
Well, the fellow could at least show up, and I'm not questioning what Pete says in the least, because I know sometimes, well, your privilege, but you get a better idea if a man at least shows up, but anyway, we'll fight that when we get to the budget.
You know, Dale, you know, I guess over time, I don't know, have we ever did, do you know if anybody's ever done any type of research on trying to define or name a water source that we could use other than paying these guys so much a load from DNL and whoever we ban, JNX, I mean, this gets to the point, we could've dug a well by now.
We had authorization for the city of Kennedy several years ago to drill a well near the yard, and it never transpired.
Really?
Yes, if you look at the cost, the water is nothing.
It's the transportation?
It's the transportation.
JNX, whatever.
And it's putting the water on the roads that's costing us, and that's why I've been looking at these other additives of putting on the road that will last longer than two weeks. Water is gonna disappear about as quick as you put it on the road. Most of the water that they have been using currently, so, has been with the road construction, where we've been putting new flex base, limestone base on the roads, you've got to have water within in order to get it compacted, and so they've been putting a lot of water on top of the roads that are getting ready for the seal coating that will be starting here in the next two, three weeks. But that is one thing that I have noticed, is that we're paying a large amount of money every month transporting water.
Is, do the transporters, are they selling you the product, or is that fee for them just for their transportation? For instance, I mean, most of the time you buy water from these DNL and Sierra and those, I don't know for sure what we're paying, but the fee that I keep hearing is about 35 cents a barrel.
And I think we're paying 30 cents.
30 cents?
30 cents a barrel.
Okay, but my question is, if we are paying the trucking company, is the product included in their fee?
No.
That's just transportation.
We're paying 30 cents a bill, or 30 cents a barrel to DNL, and then we're paying the freight cost to the JNX.
Well, we had our own water trucks.
We do, but I don't know, I know it's either not enough personnel or they can't.
One truck cannot handle the materials that we put down.
At the distance, you're sometimes, but what?
You know, pardon me, but we listen to a song and dance from Rome Bridge, I don't know if it's Mike Wozniak or whoever, about how much we needed a water truck and 10,000 gallons of water, and how much money it was gonna save us, and that's sitting over there in a parking lot. I mean, this is criminal. You know, we're buying equipment to do a job, and then we're going out and hiring trucking people to do the job because ours, you know, this is insanity. And I haven't heard one of you say a thing about that, not a word. Why don't we use our water truck?
The 5,000 gallon tanker that we've got is on the road every day.
And we're still using outside contractors to haul water?
We've got about six, from what I recall, we've got about six trucks a day out there on the road right now.
This is a beat off of subject, but can't one use brackish water on these roads? I know that if you put brackish water, if you irrigate and salty water, the soil will ultimately lose all its structure and run together and get just almost as hard as rock. Why can't we get someone to give us or even pay us to take their saltwater and use it? Is there a reason? I mean, I'm not familiar with the vagaries of the law and what you can and can't do with it or anything, but I know that if you want to kill a field, you put a little salt on it, and it'll kill the soil structure.
I'm not familiar with the rules and regulations either, I do know that the saltwater is regulated by the railroad condition. There was an accident, just pay out on 182, the salt truck, it turned over. There, this morning, when I was there at the site, there was a hazardous material company ready to collect every bit of it. So there's something in the regulations that indicates that it's, it may be a hazardous material that is regulated, and I don't know if we can or not.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not placard, you know, placard is a saltwater truck, so that's not hazardous per se, but it's, you always have a certain amount of petroleum residual in the saltwater, or most of the time you do, which to me isn't a big problem because you're on a road anyway.
Right.
But, you know, again, what their rules are, how they're promulgated, I just thought about this, because I'm familiar with areas in the valley that, especially down on the far end, down around Los Fresnos and that area, that absolutely you can't farm anymore because the river is so salty by the time you get down there, 10, 12 years of irrigating, and it's salted out, and you can't get enough fresh water to flush it, so if that happens, okay, I said what I.
I can all investigate.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that might save us a few dollars if we could figure out how or why. But anyway, I would move that we pay the bills with the exception of the association dues noted in 10-475-4810, and the conference expense noted in 10-497-4270.
On the, on the conference expense, I understand since we passed on the investment officer to your office, it's no longer with the treasurer's office, and this conference expense is directed to an investment, solely just an investment, or is there other training on there?
There is just investment.
Which that office, I'm sorry, which that office does not do that anymore?
Correct.
So that would be no reason for that office to have that training? I'm just.
And I believe the treasurers, at their conference, they had investment training anyway.
They do have some algorithms.
So.
And there, if this desire is to maintain certification, there are classes offered online, but as a taxpayer, I don't think it should be a taxpayer expense.
So, yeah, that's the only thing, I understand exactly what it is, if they're not investment, why is it going on, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that there was no other training in this court that she may need.
Specifically investments.
Specifically investment, and she doesn't need none of that training, so, I know you can't have that directly, but I just wish she was here to.
She's a taxpayer.
Yeah, I understand that 100% of what we're talking about, I just wish that she was here to at least, you know, say a piece on it. All right, well, motion's been made, I'm second, all right? All in favor to pay the bills with the exception of 10475-4810 and 10497-4270, right? Say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna say aye on everything else except for the one on the conference expense, not because I disagree with it, but I would wanted to at least hear what she has to say on that, because it's the only one that I oppose, is the 10497-4270. A motion passes, three to one. While we're signing this, anybody have anything to say?
There's an emergency court meeting on Thursday, just to remind you, 3 o'clock.
What time?
3 o'clock on Thursday.
3 o'clock, okay.
Tell you right now, I'm not gonna be there for that meeting, 'cause I have radiation treatment that day, at 3 o'clock.
What are we doing, Mary?
It's Chapman's, several talks on litigation, decorative sessions, litigation, surviving specific, or the property over there, and then HMC, litigation against HMC for performance issues, full status of contract on the joint project with HMC, granted, HMC has a particular partial substantial inclusion, due payment for some pay applications, Architect's Preparation of Chamber Number Nine with HMC, and Number 10, and then discussion of annex, contract and ability to improve the water system, and then final change order for that copper.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody has anything else to say, then, if I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make one.
That made, it's second all in favor to adjourn, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes, we're adjourned. Oh, wait, I thought you had time to say, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.